Good evening, everybody, and welcome. Good evening, everybody, and welcome. For those who are watching home, and for those of you here in the room, the school committee has just returned from executive session where we discussed strategy for negotiations with the superintendent-designee and non-union employee. We will now proceed with our budget hearing. Tonight's proceedings are being broadcast live by Boston City TV, Comcast Channel 4, and RCN Channel 13. It will be rebroadcast at a later date. We do have interpretation services available this evening in Spanish, Haitian Creole, and Chinese. Will the Spanish translator please introduce himself?
I'm Spanish, my name is Jerry.
En español, si, por favor. Could you say it in Spanish, please?
Sorry, we don't speak Spanish.
Thank you. Haitian Creole?
My name is Martínez, I'm from New York. Normally, I'm Martínez, but I'm a little bit Asian.
Thank you. And Chinese? There's a Chinese interpreter here. Not yet, okay. I'll recognize when she walks in the room. So if people need translation services, please avail yourself of them. If you would like to speak this evening but have not yet signed up, please see our school committee staff in the hallway. Ms. Mitchell is out there. I'd like to thank you all for coming tonight. Budget hearings like this are critical because it's our opportunity to hear from you, the parents, the students, and other stakeholders who make our district work. A number of you were at Monday's school committee hearing at the Little Frederick School, and you may have seen that the school committee received a much more in-depth presentation from the district at that point, and asked a number of questions, many of which we expect to be answered this evening during our regular school committee meeting. But we'll move on right now to general public comment. Ms. Sullivan?
Thank you, Mr. O'Neil. Each speaker will have two minutes to speak, and I'll remind you when you have 30 seconds remaining. Those who require interpretation services will be allotted additional two minutes. Written testimony is appreciated and encouraged. Please state your name and affiliation before you begin. TV cameras will only record speakers who face the committee. We'll begin with students from Orchard Gardens, starting with Yester Diaz-Kelly, Arlene Fernandez, Kamaru Osini, and Keshatu Osini.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Diaz-Kelly. I want to pull that nice and close to you.
My name is Diaz-Kelly, from the Orchard Gardens.
You may just want to speak up a little bit, sir, so that folks can hear you. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Diaz-Kelly, and I have been attending Orchard Gardens for nine years. I am here to share my experience with you. I am in eighth grade, and five years ago, before the school's turnaround, the school was full of weekly suspension because of fighting. The hallways were chaotic and unsafe because students would bring weapons to school. Learning was unstable because teachers didn't actually care enough to keep on engaging us to learn, and the classrooms were full of loud screams and people out of seats. Since turnaround, the school's provided new opportunities for students at Orchard Gardens, like electives, which are band, media, art, theater, and dance. The hallways are not chaotic or unsafe because students are traveling from class to class in an orderly fashion. Classrooms are now more productive because the teachers take their time and job seriously and take the time to make sure students are learning. The loss of money will affect our school badly, because if we lose a lot of our fundings, the school will have to cut jobs of teachers because of the money shortage, making classes bigger, which leads to each student getting less hope from the teachers. The loss of money will also affect the performing art classes because the fundings we got during the turnaround will not be available, so the teachers, our teachers, will struggle to be able to support the students with new books or materials needed for the classes, like reads for instruments, music books, and scripts for theater.
Thirty seconds. Excuse me, thirty seconds.
Please help Orchard Gardens by giving additional funding. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Diaz-Kelly. May I ask if you have a copy, and anyone else, if you have copies of your written statement at the end, if you could give it to Ms. Sullivan? That's great, then members get full copies of all of them as well, okay? Thank you, sir.
Aleni Fernandez. Good afternoon. My name is Aleni Fernandez. I have been attending Orchard Gardens.
Excuse me, Ms. Fernandez, could you just get a little closer to the microphone, please, so everyone can hear you?
Okay. Good afternoon. My name is Aleni Fernandez. I have been attending Orchard Gardens for two years and five months. I am in eighth grade. When I first came to the United States, I didn't know any English. When I came to Orchard Gardens, I had a lot of support. Because there were a lot of teachers, some classes were separated into groups. The students who knew English went to a regular class, and the students who did not would go to class to learn English. That class was very helpful for me, because it helped me with my English, and it helped me become a better student, and made me work harder and learn English more. The teachers were very helpful for me, because they encouraged me and supported me throughout these years, and because of them, I was able to speak English in less than a year and understand it clearly. The next year, I was in a regular seventh-grade class. I think if it wasn't for the support of the teachers and all their encouragement, I wouldn't be in a class with English speakers or even be this far in my English. With the support I have been given, my grades are high, and my behavior is really good. I was able to apply to many independent high schools, and was even accepted to some alreading. The support and help all the teachers gave me changed my life and made me a better student and person. So if you give Orchard Gardens the money we need, it will be used in a good way. The teachers will help other students who are new to the country in the school learn English faster and one-tem to do their best, so the school can continue to become better, and the teachers will support and encourage more students. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fernandez.
Our next speaker is Kamaru Osini, followed by Keshatu Osini.
My name is Kamaru Osini, and this is my brother, Keshatu Osini. We have been students at Orchard Gardens for nine years. We are currently in seventh grade. We have been at Orchard Gardens long enough to experience the turnaround of the school. Before the turnaround, the school was in shambles. One of the things I can recall was how the behavior and discipline used to be. The behavior was chaotic. There would be chronic problems with students' behaviors from all grades. The disciplinary system failed to keep students' behaviors under control. There would be a lot of fights and just blatant disrespect everywhere. That created an unsafe environment. Another thing that the school did not pay attention to was the arts. The only arts we had was visual arts, and I personally didn't think the teachers were very good. Now Orchard Gardens has dance, chorus, musical instruments, and visual art classes. Another thing that has changed since turnaround is the behavior and the effort to keep the behaviors under control. There are less disciplinary issues now. There are less fights, and also, the way the school treated disciplinary issues have improved. The teachers pay more attention to problems, and there are reasonable consequences that also help students to be less likely to misbehave again. The teachers are encouraging and push me to do my best work, and our classes are rigorous. Last year, my brother and I were accepted to the John D. O'Brien School. Everyone was congratulating us because we had been accepted into such a great exam school. We did not choose to attend the O'Brien this past fall. The reason why we stayed at Orchard Gardens is because, even though we heard the O'Brien is a great school, we wanted to strive for more than the O'Brien. We stayed because Orchard Gardens gave us great opportunities, like attending an SSAT prep course. By the time we are done with Orchard Gardens, we believe that we will be able to get accepted into a great independent school. Thank you for listening, and please consider to keep funding our school.
Thank you, Mr. Osini. Thank you both, actually.
Next, we'll hear from Dolores Wood, followed by Betty O'Gara and Jack Sennett.
Is Ms. Wood here?
Is Ms. Wood here? Okay.
Is Ms. Wood here?
I'm Betty O'Gara.
Okay, great. Why don't we move forward to Betty O'Gara, and then we'll have Ms. Wood. I do see you in the hallway, so, good evening, Ms. O'Gara.
Good evening, and I come tonight to thank you all for the funding that you've provided to Key Steps Inc., which is a school-based agency that's located at five high schools and Boston Public Schools. Boston International High School, West Roxbury Academy, Urban Science Academy, the Newcomers Academy, and Charlestown High School. Last year, we graduated 54 young people, and about 50 percent of those young people went on to higher education. And I have here information about each of the schools, but for the most part, I just wanted to thank you for your funding, thank you for your support of a dropout prevention school completion agency that's been in existence for 35 years, and it's provided services to expectant and parenting teens, newcomers to the country, and special needs young people. I also have to say that I just came out of a meeting from 3:30 to 4:30 for one of the young people that's helping us plan our 35th anniversary. She's a graduate of Boston International High School, and she just graduated from assumption and would like to go to medical school.
Thank you, Ms. O'Gara.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Dolores Wood.
Thank you so much. Good to see you.
Then, Mr. Sennett. We're doing Ms. Wood for us, and then, Mr. Sennett. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Hi.
Good evening, Ms. Wood.
I'm Dolores Wood. I'm a teacher at West Roxbury Academy, and just one more thing about this. One more essential topic that must be discussed before you make your decision on West Roxbury Academy's future is how fluid the numbers are when it comes to assigning under-enrolled status and underperforming status. Over the years, we have found the numbers are subject to the district's discretion. West Roxbury Academy is closer to the middle performing status in the BPS district in MCAS testing in English and science, according to the State Department of Education's statistics for spring 2014. Meanwhile, we have been assigned more higher-risk students with more endangered status on the district's leading and lagging report. We are given warnings that they are at high risk for dropping out. We have welcomed all our students. Every year, our MCAS scores are rising despite increasing challenges. Also, according to the figures of the State Department of Education, West Roxbury Academy has not experienced the largest decline in enrollment in the BPS district. West Roxbury Academy is grouped statistically with Brighton High School, Jeremiah Burke High School, and XL High School in categories below a 20 percent decline. Schools that have experienced declines in enrollment exceeding 20 percent are English High School, Urban Science Academy, and Boston Adult Technical Academy. We know that more people want to choose an assignment at West Roxbury Academy than are allowed to do so. School assignment is often what the district makes it. What percentage of students in grade nine submit a school choice form? What happens to students who make no choice? How are those students assigned? In many cases, our soft landings required only a student or two more assigned to us to have sufficient number. Why weren't they assigned to us? Given what recently occurred at Madison Park, the district has a history of moving students without parent signatures or approval. Why can't the district fill vacant buildings through this process? And finally, despite the declines in enrollment and the higher percentage of lower-scoring and higher-risk students at West Roxbury is not now and has never been a turnaround school. We have not failed probation because we have never qualified for probation. We have taken the challenges that were presented to us, and we have raised the status of all our students, and we are proud of that. Okay? This move seems to be, it's not natural selection. It seems to us more politics at a rarefied level, which at its end could lead to privilege moving into that building after the park is finished and it's renovated, perhaps. So we really would like for this to be considered, you know, for people to think deeply about what they're doing to our students before this happens, okay?
Thank you, Ms. Wood.
Thank you, Ms. Wood. Our next speaker is Jack Sennett. After Mr. Sennett, we'll hear from Melissa Arlene and Guy Coop.
Mr. McDonough, Mr. O'Neil, committee members, thank you very much for giving us this opportunity to speak. My name is Jack Sennett. I'm a parent, and I'm a board member of SPEDPAC, and I'm speaking tonight on behalf of SPEDPAC. So budget time is here again, and it's always sort of an interesting process for us in SPED, because of course, SPED spending is largely nondiscretionary, but you've got to budget stuff. And in looking through the numbers, we see some very good, positive things. I'm glad to see increases for the Mozart School, where there's some intensive autism programs. It's a very small school, but there's a lot of kids that are helped there. But we see some concerns while we support structural changes to how things like lab clusters are funded. It looks like that may have a material impact on funding for the Irving School, where there's a significant lab cluster presence. So we've got some ups and downs. Overall, I think it's fair to say that our position is to take the long view. And we ask you, when you're looking at the budget, to bear in mind that the money that's spent now on support services, on staffing for ABA, for increased access for disabled kids or kids in wheelchairs, for emotional and developmental needs, they pay off in the long run. They pay off in decreased expenses for the schools, increased opportunities for the kids, and a genuine increase in the quality of education that all students here in Boston
Twenty seconds.
receive. So I think on behalf of SPEDPAC, I would ask you to just bear in mind that, you know, a dollar spent today to help a child can go a long way as their educational career proceeds. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Sennett.
My name is Melissa Arlene Honeywood. I am a Boston resident. I am a future BCPS parent. I am a chef, a registered dietitian, the former staff specialist of Baltimore City Public Schools, and the current food service director for Cambridge Public Schools. And now, I'm pretty impressed that I did not see any eye rolls when I said I worked for Cambridge Public Schools, so I applaud you on that. But I would want you to know that I understand where you're coming from, and I do not envy the position that you are in trying to run a large, major urban school district. However, with some of the proposals that have been put forward and pushed through that are proposed for the food nutrition services, I felt that it was important for me to share my voice as a child nutrition expert, to show you that I think some of the changes that are proposed could be better targeted to create savings in the long run without misguided perceptions of what you will result. Most importantly, I've seen in the slides at previous presentations that reducing the number of food options will reduce food waste. In my years of experience, that is not the case. And I'll give you a perfect example. At the Cambridge Ringe and Latin High School, where I operate, we have a pasta station, two deli stations, two salad bars, two soup bars, a grill station, a vegetarian station, as well as a variety of hot and cold sides that are available every day. But that school has one of the lowest food costs out of the entire district, and that's in comparison to some of the smaller schools that offer fewer options throughout the day. Overproduction creates food waste, not the number of meal options. By reducing the number of meal options, you're actually isolating students who may have a varied preference. And as adults who work in the district, it is our job to make sure that we are offering healthy meals.
Twenty seconds.
I see the banner behind you says, "Focus on Children." Focus on the whole child. A child who is male-nourished, who has not eaten, is not better able to learn than students who are well-nourished. Think about the students who are in areas where they do not have access to healthy meals. They do not get to see fresh fruits and vegetables in the fast-food restaurants that are in their neighborhood. Sometimes, the meals that we offer in school is the first opportunity that students get to try a fresh peach for the first time in their life. It's the first opportunity where they get to see fresh fruits and vegetables in front of them. By reducing the number of food options, you're denying the opportunity for these students who may be in areas that are not typically targeted for improvement, you're denying them the opportunity to expand their palate, because if you do not offer healthy foods to students, they can't eat it. I thank you for your time, and I am providing a written testimony with actual steps and guidance, if I were food service director for the department, on what you could do to actually create cost savings, and I hope you take the time to look into it. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you, Ms. Honeywood.
Thank you.
Appreciate you professionally. Appreciate you.
Next, we'll hear from Guy Coop, followed by Stephanie Shapiro-Berkson.
My name is Guy Coppe, and I am a, I live in Jamaica Plain, and I'm a Haley Pilot School parent, and I'm currently the food service director in Watertown. And I just want to echo a little bit of what Melissa said, and also add that the proposal, as I understand it, to reduce the number of options served, may not actually reduce cost. And, you know, if you're looking at the situation that you have, from what I understand it in Boston, and in many other districts in the state, labor cost is fixed. So union agreements fix the amount of labor that any district has. And changing the amount of labor at each school, I suspect, would need to be part of union negotiations, of course. So if you're looking at food costs, and you have two sort of, the two components of food costs being fixed cost, which I already talked about being fixed, and variable cost, which would be the food, I'm not exactly sure how just reducing the number of options that you're serving the kids would lead to a lower food cost. I mean, in some instances, it might, but in others, it wouldn't. And it's tough to know exactly where you'd land until you really get into the nitty-gritty of figuring out what the, you know, the actual menu choices before and after would be. So I would just lay that out to you guys to say, you know, be careful.
Twenty seconds.
And just the other thing I'd like to say is, you know, just making sure we serve healthy options to our children is really, as I'm sure you're all aware of, is really of utmost importance. And I echo what Melissa was saying about the schools really being the place where to many of the students who are enrolled in the schools are being introduced to foods. You know, they might not get the healthiest choices at home, but if we can provide them the healthiest choices possible at school, I think that's the way to go. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Coop.
Our next speaker is Stephanie Shapiro-Berkson, followed by Christina Martinez.
My name is Stephanie Shapiro-Berkson, and thank you so much for this opportunity. I'm a BPS parent, and my five- and eight-year-old sons go to the Elliott School, and I too am going to third what Guy and Melissa have said, because I'm also a professor in public health, and my focus is food justice and childhood obesity prevention. Nearly all children attend school. This statistic makes schools the ideal vehicle to reach nearly all kids, especially from hard-to-reach populations. My family is fortunate to be food secure, but we are part of a community where 78 percent of students qualify for free and reduced lunch. That's an important indicator of potential food insecurity. Obesity in BPS is 22 percent, as measured by our own BPS data. In Brookline, it's 6 percent. BPS has a nationally recognized wellness department, and one of the most established, and boasts one of the strongest wellness policies in the nation. We're a school district with a reputation of being committed to health equity. I am so disappointed to hear that decreasing the nutritional value of school lunch by limiting choices and variety to ultimately offer chicken nuggets, hamburgers, pizza, and hot dogs is under consideration. This goes against who we are as a school district, weakening our commitment to equity, and in this case, food justice. It also goes against our commitment to academic achievement, especially our commitment to lowering the academic achievement gap. Research study after research study continue to show that students who have better diet quality have improved academic achievement. Schools must provide meals that include specific nutrients essential to improving academics.
Twenty seconds.
Dietary adequacy and variety are identified as specific aspects of diet quality important to academic performance, highlighting the value of consuming a diverse selection of foods in order to meet the recommended numbers of servings from each food group. There's no statistical controversy disputing the effective school nutrition programs have the potential to improve student access to healthy food choices, diet quality, academic performance, and over the long term, and ultimately, health justice. On behalf of my children, and when I say my children, I really mean our children in the Boston Public Schools, I urge you to continue your commitment to the goal of equitably, equitable, high academic achievement universally. This includes investing in food service. Divesting goes against who we are and against what we owe our children. And again, thank you very much.
Thank you, Professor Shapiro-Berkson.
Next, we'll hear from Christina Martinez, followed by Chung-Fai Chan.
I'm Christina Martinez, and I recently proposed a three-school merger with West Roxbury Academy, Urban Science Academy, and the Rogers Middle School. I understand that with keeping everything as is, it would not benefit the budget issue, but with the merge, it would be a scratch on the back for both of us. With the With the proposal, I personally can only see one obstacle, which is transportation. But I also pitched an idea for having a shuttle bus from Forest Hills, which can fit more kids and will cut down the prices of yellow school bus. Since I personally can only provide a student point of view, you as a school committee can probably point out other faults in the idea. But I can provide benefits that you may not have thought of. On top of an influx in enrollment, popularity in the school would increase because we're bringing in a different factor that the school has yet to provide, which is a middle school. With the school committee view on the school, you may not notice our small accomplishments, such as increasing our student government from eight committed members in 2014 to over 30-plus members in 2015. Our volleyball team won three more games than we did our previous year, and we also doubled in members. An engineer after-school program was launched, and we had our first official homecoming dance. As Ms. Richmond, a West Roxbury Academy teacher, said, this three-school merger would also improve the comfort in the special needs community. The kids would already be familiar with their teachers and environments as the school years go on. As the years go on, we build new traditions and new relationships, including two other schools can increase student enrollment in after-school clubs and in sports. West Roxbury students would still have the same hallways and the same teachers, and would be able to play on the field that we saw develop every day, which I think we deserve. If you turn behind you, it says "Boston Public Schools focuses on the children," but when really, it's mainly focused on money. Knowledge will change the world, not money. I hope you can deeply take in my proposal and involve children in the process of our own future. Not only is this about test scores, but this is also about the growth of an adolescent, and how that would be disrupted if West Roxbury Academy ceased in existence. Without this school, I would not be the person I am today. And the only way I can think of saying thank you is giving back to my school and inspiring other students. But I won't be able to do that if you shut down my school. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez. Or Ms. Martinez, as I said last time when you spoke to us, Madam President, as you are, you did not decline, you declined to say to folks, but you are president of the student body at West Roxbury, the student council at West Roxbury Academy. So, thank you.
Okay. Our next speaker is Chung-Fai Chan, followed by Stephen Genotasio.
I'd like to thank the school committee for this opportunity. My name is Chung-Fai Chan. I'm a Dorchester resident, and I'm also a teacher, lead teacher, at the Department of Adult Education for Boston Public Schools. To provide, so our mission at Adult is to provide a variety of high-quality educational services to BPS parents, children, employees, and other Boston residents to develop their educational status, political status, economic status in lives. BPS has over 140 years responded to adults in need of education, and has recognized that critical to the success of every child's education is parent and family involvement. In order to improve learning for all children, educational opportunities are made available for parents and other adults in the community. We provide basic skills that prepare parents to enter the workforce, higher education, and job training. Our adult students represent the Boston community, native-born Americans and immigrants who need educational credentials, English language skills, and/or math proficiency to compete in the workforce. Just want to give you a few numbers as to how important this is to our school system. Our night school, Boston Central Adult High School, has a waiting list of approximately 229 adults right now. That's in our English, second language classes. But the good news is that our adult basic education has, we accepted over 120 adults this past February. So, it brings a critical type of importance to why funding is very important for adult education.
Twenty seconds.
And in our family literacy program during the day, there is a waiting list of 118 adults during the day for English classes. And for adult secondary education, it's much lower, but at the same time, there is a need out there, especially with the changes in, especially with changes in the GED program. And to obtain high school credentials, it's vitally important for all of our adults to have a chance to compete in today's workforce. So, I want to thank everybody here for listening, and I will leave a copy to everyone here.
Thank you, Mr. Chan. Appreciate it.
Good evening, Superintendent McDonough and members of the committee. My name is Stephen Genotasio. I'm a resident of West Roxbury, a teacher at West Roxbury. Hopefully, very soon, I'll find out I'm a parent of a future BPS student. And I'm also the track coach at West Roxbury. Before I say my remarks tonight, I just want to say, I always do assume best intentions. And what I think I'm talking about tonight is unintended consequences, but it is a tough conversation this city's been having for a very long time. So, I want to bring historical perspective to this close, and a debate that has raged since 1974. According to the 2010 census, my neighborhood was 77.2% white at the time, West Roxbury. The student body of West Roxbury Academy primarily comes from Dorchester, Hyde Park, Roselandale, Jamaica Plain, and then finally, we do have 39 students from Westie. And we also have 1.4, sorry, got off topic. Westie is 45.9% African-American, 40% Hispanic, and 10% white, with 1.4% each belonging to multiracial or Asian students. Our school is geographically and ethnically diverse, and it brings integration to West Roxbury every day that students take buses. Every day, students shop in local stores. Every day, students work in our community. Every time, they interact with a community that is, as a neighborhood, still fairly one race. Resegregation of Westie did happen recently. In 2003, the Shaw School was moved to Matapan, and the Linden School was moved into Westie. The Shaw School being a primarily African-American school, the Linden, at the time, being a primarily white school. Even today, according to Desi's numbers, the Linden is 47.8% white, 42% Hispanic, and 7.8% African-American. These numbers are very different than our average school in the district, and I don't want that to happen to West Roxbury Academy, to the high school building. And I think there's a lot of fear about that, just because no one really knows what will happen with the building after 2016. One positive outcome of the busing order of 1974 is that the city is far less geographically parochial. Superintendent McDonough, you did say for the last couple of meetings that the school closure recommendation is not about the finances of the school, but declining enrollment. Before we move our students back into majority-minority neighborhood schools, I would urge this committee to remember our district's ultimate promise to integration. Strengthening West Roxbury education complex with its current student body is one way to do so. Thank you for your time. I'm going to bring copies of the letter, the article, and the census over to...
Thank you, Mr. Genotasio.
Our next speaker is Javon Bruton, followed by Vanessa Villanova.
Hi. My name is Javon Bruton. I'm 16 years old, and I am a youth leader associate Latina. I live in Roxbury, and I'm here to fight for the schools our community deserves. I am one of the many worried students at Madison, and I'm here to ask BPS to fund Madison. We are struggling to stay on our feet. BPS is planning to cut 1.5 million from Madison, which I think is a horrible idea for many reasons. Firstly, Madison is badly maintenance. If you step into the facility, you will find mice and roaches all over it. Also, there are leaks in the building. Secondly, it will cost more in the long run. I say this because, at the rate Madison is going, it will collapse on itself, which will force BPS to pay to move all the vocational students at Madison to another vocational school outside of the district. The third reason I say that is because, the third reason I say that is because Madison does not have the right amount of funds for the supplies and the equipment needed for to run its vocation. My vocation is welding, and we have barely done any welding or shop work, which is just unacceptable. We have been trying to fix this problem on our own all year, but we have miserably failed. My proposal is to tweak the student waiting funding for vocational students by simply adding a little more weight per vocational student. I am here to ask, as a proud, as a proud student of Madison Park, that the city and BPS consider its promise that it made to Madison, to make it the best vocational school it can be. These cuts are not fulfilling that promise. We are digging a hole for Madison that we cannot climb out of, and I hope that you reconsider your cuts. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bruton.
My name is Vanessa. I'm 16 years old, and I'm a youth leader associate Latina. And I'm a sophomore at Madison Park. I'm here to say that I'm disappointed in my school district and my city. Madison is a priority. I know because I heard the mayor and the school committees and the school committee say this. I also heard that not having schedules for two weeks is un...
It's okay. Take your time. It's important for us to hear your thoughts as a student at Madison Park and a associate Latina representative. So, take your time, take a breath, and then go right ahead when you're ready.
Is unacceptable. It is. And that Madison should be the best vocational school in Massachusetts. But I'm not sure that. So, why is the district cutting almost 11% of Madison's budget, more than 1.5 million? Can anyone here really say that is going to help the situation? Cutting the budget means less teachers in our classrooms. It means less opportunities and vocations. Vocational education needs more...
Sorry, we didn't quite hear what the end you said. Vocational education needs more...
Resources.
Resources to create weighted student funding formula. We reflect that we need to change it so that Madison can be fully funded as a vocational education schools are in the state. I sincerely hope that the district and the mayor lives up to the promise it made to Madison, but these budget cuts are not making my school better. Please reconsider. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next, we'll hear from Thomas Parks and John Mudd.
Good evening. My name is Tom Parks. I am a retired Boston public school teacher. I did...
Mr. Parks, may I just ask you to just get a little bit closer to the microphone?
Okay.
So, I probably don't have to say, use your teacher voice.
I did 24 years at the Luenberg Middle School, and my last five years were at Madison Park. And I'm here to talk about three schools, actually. Madison Park, which is my baby. When I left the Luenberg, I looked around to see where I might land, where I might be able to use some of my talents. I'm a product of Boston Public Schools. I graduated Dorchester High in '72. And so, my desire is to be with these kids and to help out, and to make sure that whatever I have to offer, I can impart to them. I'm very disturbed by what's been happening at Madison Park lately. Way back, the mayor, Manino, said that Madison was a priority, that we would not stop until this thing was right. And I'm just really bothered by what's been happening there. The hiring process was stopped early on. I thought Boston had adopted this new policy that we'll hire teachers in February and March so that we can get the good teachers. At Madison, it was stopped early, and it didn't open back up until just about two, three weeks before school started. And therefore, we didn't get the best teachers, and in some cases, we didn't have enough teachers. And so, the kids rightly hit the sidewalk, you know, protested. The kids want to be educated. And so, I'm just hoping that Madison will start to get the respect that it deserves. All this construction going on in the city, we should be a part of that. The other two schools I'd like to talk about is Middle School Academy and the Community Academy. These two schools are slated to be closed, and I'm looking at my experience in the lab cluster for 18 years. Those kids cannot function in a regular ed class. They need supports. And some of them, especially the Community Academy kids, some of them have ankle bracelets. They've been involved in a lot of stuff. Those schools are closing down. What's the plan for them? Should they be in the classroom wreaking havoc? Teachers can't teach, students can't learn. And so, I'm asking that you consider what's supposed to happen to those kids. Are they going back into the building to create more havoc? They were taken out because of certain reasons. And so, I just ask that you look at that. And thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Parks.
Good evening. John Mudd, Advocate Emeritus. A plea and a question tonight. First, I've suggested that it's very important, when we look at the budget, to try and break it out, not just in terms of the account codes and line items, but in terms of program budgets. I think that that's the way most people think, that's the way we can understand it. What's happening in special education? What's happening in English language learning? What's happening in adult education? Et cetera. And I know you can't do it on the whole budget now, which I find too bad, but I want to make a special plea that in the time remaining, you try to make an effort to do it for professional development. It seems to me that in any theory of change, in any logic of action, in any analysis of how we're going to improve the education of our children, we have to focus on professional development. How are we responding to the evaluations? How are we preparing teachers for inclusion? How are we preparing teachers in regular ed to deal with English language learners that either are assigned there or opt out? Those are crucial questions, and I think it warrants some special attention. I say that particularly because I understand you're going to be focusing perhaps on March 19th on the central budget cuts. You've talked about $10 million cuts in services and another $6 million in FTEs. What is going to be the programmatic impact on that? I would say generally, but I'm particularly concerned about professional development. I try to follow things closely. We went through central cuts last year. I didn't notice, and maybe that was just my ignorance or absent-mindedness, but I think we changed dramatically how we approach professional development. We cut out full-time professional development staff.
Twenty seconds.
We cut out content staff, and we went to a part-time system, a stipended kind of support system. There were studies by Rick Weisbauer years ago from Reed Boston Harvard Ed... of the operating departments and I haven't seen the results of that analysis for, uh, the Department of Education. And I think that I would assume that a programmatic audit of this department might be quite important as you and we face the budget issues. So, I would ask, where is it and what can we learn from it? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mudd.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Fatih Mohammed, followed by Rosanna Rizer.
As, as, um, Mr. Mohammed, was it?
Ms. Mohammed.
Ms. Mohammed, excuse me. As Ms. Mohammed is approaching, I, I'm not sure if, I haven't seen any city councils here this evening, but I do know, uh, Mr. Henry Cohen from Councilor Wu's office is, uh, here. So, I want to make sure to acknowledge, uh, his presence. Good evening, Ms. Mohammed.
Hi.
Oh, is Counselor Jackson here?
No, Mr. Jackson.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, Tristan, I'm an intern at Counselor Jackson's office.
Thank you. So, someone from Counselor Jackson's office. Thank you. Okay.
Hello.
Good evening, Ms. Mohammed.
My name is Fatih Mohammed. Um, I'm a senior at West Roxbury Academy, speaking again. Um, I'm also a member of the House Program at ABCD Crew Exploration and I'm also proud to be a member of Boston Youth Service Network Youth Committee. This youth committee represents fifteen other programs across Boston and I'm, they're here today to support me as well. Today, I'm here to talk about my home school, West Roxbury Academy. In West Roxbury Academy, we have guidance counselors who are dedicated to excellence and willing to assist us with our, with completing our college application and furthermore. Our committed teachers are determined to ensure our academic success. At West Roxbury Academy, we strive for better possibilities. We stand together and no one is left behind. We have the great optimism and the means to, to educate students. I heard stories of freshmen, sophomores, and upperclassmen. Speaking of their experiences and how they consider Westy home, our students have been informed that they may be enforced to go to English High School in Madison Park. This disappoints our students' confidence. A Westy college enrollment rate is sixty-five percent comparing to English High, which forty-five percent. What does it say? What does it feel for juniors who have a guidance counselor? Who may have a guidance counselor next year? Who may be asking their name? How does it feel for your guidance counselor to ask your name? Who will be writing your recommendation? That just disappoints our students, our, our juniors who have been to Westy since their freshman year, who have that confidence that they will be graduating from West Roxbury today. But unfortunately, that may not happen, but we're here tonight to advocate for our school. How can we guarantee that our juniors will go to college next year if there were placed to other schools? That's my question. And I would say, please consider West Roxbury Academy. It's our school and some students, most of our students consider West Roxbury High School home. It's our home, not only our school. We don't only receive that school, we don't only receive education from there. It's our school and we consider that home. Please consider your decision again. I know it's hard decision, but I am begging you, consider West Roxbury Academy. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Thank you, Ms. Mohammed.
Good afternoon. My name is Rosanna Rivera. I'm the owner of Latino Beauty Salon. I'm also a board member of Aggression Square Main Street. I also a co-founder of JP Local Fair. And the most important and the model of Rafael Rivera, one current student in Community Academy. I'd like to share with you the great success story that my son have in that school. Rafael never has success in a traditional school because they, they don't have the experience to work with kids like Rafael. At Community Academy, he is in small classes where he gets one-on-one attention and his teachers are able to push him much farther academically. Because Community Academy works with students who have strong emotional needs, they have a strong counseling component. They have helped Rafi to stay motivated. For the first time, he's talking about going to college instead of dropping out. He has been able to get off of all his ADHD medication. It is vital for those kids that the school remain open the way it is. The money that is planned to save in the closing of the school, I'm pretty sure that is going to be in spending jail for these kids. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Saloni Espinola and Marcus Tulo.
Hello. Uh, my name is Saloni Espinola and I'm just a psych teacher at the Boston Public Schools. Um, and I'm here today because I'm a little shocked and surprised. Boston International is a school who serves hundred percent of students coming from many countries in the world. And, uh, Boston Public Schools and the state ask us, as community, to make up for a bunch of years that those, the, the students at any of our schools either never went to school in my, in the case of the students I serve for psych students, or they need to, they went to school, but, uh, they need to come to a different system in which they need to learn a new language and go through a testing, a quite, uh, robust testing system. And we, we need to make up all these years in three, four years. Despite that, Boston International went from a level-three school to a level-one school. Not many schools in the Boston Public Schools can, can say that they are level-one school. Well, we are one of those. And we compete with the suburban schools such as Western and Newton and Winchester and all these other schools that they went down to level-three. Stanford University considered Boston International one of the seven best school-serving English language learner in the whole country. And they are coming at the end of this month, at the end of, of May, sorry, to, uh, to study best practices at Boston International. Harvard School of Education believes that-
Twenty seconds.
-we're exemplary in the way we approach education as well and they are with us, this is, has been with us for two years, uh, studying our ILT meetings, uh, co- contented meetings and bring them to, uh, uh, conferences, uh, for other school districts during the summer. Well, and then our budget is going to be down and particularly the extracurricular budget. Our school is able to do this because we need to make up for the time that our kids didn't have in school. And the only way to do it is if we add enrichment programs. Those enrichment programs are summer schools and today I was going to pretend that you were going to be my students, but I changed my, but I brought a bunch of pictures for you to, to, to take a look of those extracurricular activities. And I was, I was going to ask you, but I'm not going to do it. If you remember when you were a youngster, what did you do during, during your summers? What did your parents, uh, you to do? Were you just watching TV and doing nothing or you had opportunities, enrichment opportunities? Uh, those of you who have children, I do have children, I, I really do my best that their summers and vacation times are spent in a rich way because I know that this is good for them and, and they're, and they're going to be more successful.
Mr. Espinola, I'm afraid you're past your time.
Sorry. Well, please, uh, give us a little bit of money so we can keep doing it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Espinola.
Uh, my name is Marcus Tulo and I'm from La Brea. I have come a long way to be with you today. As a child in La Brea, I moved often during the Civil War. In my con- um, sorry for that. A lot of time, I was, I was not able to go to school. When I come, when I first come to America, I had many challenge with literature. In middle school, people, people was nice, but they not seem to know, to know how to help me. When I entered high school, I did not believe that I would, I could even be a successful student and graduate. All that has changed. When I begin school at Boston International, I've, I've, I found a home and teacher who would never give up on me. They understand that I need extra help and extra help. And in my time, at Boston, Boston International High School, I have had a lot of extra help. I stay after school. I come on Saturday school. I come on the vacation and in the summer. This extra time helped me, helped me. Ev- and even though I has challenge, I pass all of my MCAS test and will want to go to college. I was worried when we at the school stay consider a meeting and we, and we learned that the money for summer school is cut and we do not know about the after-school and Saturday school program for next year. There will be more student like me, student that need help. They will need after-school and Saturday school to make it. Please make sure that student come to get the extra time they need. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Tulo.
Our next speaker is Derlin Tejeda, followed by Celestina Antoni.
My name is Derlin Tejeda. I come from Dominican Republic like two and a half years ago. So, I'm a senior at Boston International Newcomer Academy. And I am here to explain to you what Boston International Academy have done for me by the after, ha- after school. I is still an English learner, a student and my parent in house, in my, in house doesn't, cannot help me doing my homework. So, I have to give the hard work and be after school every day to finish my, all my homework. That's how, how I get my grade up. So, like, and I am, I'm sorry. I applied to Harvard University and I, in, let me see, I, January thirteenth, I get an interview with them and I, I don't, I am waiting for the answer, but-
You're doing fine, sir. You're doing fine. Just speak from your heart. Tell us what you're thinking.
I am so thankful about what, what Boston International have done for me because I realized that all the teacher and principal take care of us. They love what, what they are doing. They, they don't do things like just for the job. They love what they're doing. They, they try hard help out and we, we are behind because we all are immigrant students that we have to catch up the bo- foreign people. So, the people who, who, who are, who have the, who speak English more than us. So, we have to work harder than those at school and we made it. We, I consider myself that we are doing good job.
Thank you, Mr. Tejala.
So, hi. My name is Celestina Antonis. I'm from Kevere and I am a junior at Binka. It has been a difficult road for me to arrive at the point where I am a strong student preparing for college. At Binka, I started in the native language program with Ms. Edward. She taught me how to be a good student and soon as I was ready to take all the, all of my classes in English, I know when I, I need a help and I have take advantage of all the extra help at school. I had, I have been after school. I come for Saturday school. I also went to summer school at Binka. If it wasn't for the extra time, I would not have learned as much. We need to keep this program going so that all the students can get extra help and have a great future. Thank you so much.
Our next speaker is Mary Key Rolinthia Donal, followed by Lucia Taylor.
Um, my name is Mary Kay. Um, I'm from AD. So, Boston International High School is a diverse community. We are like one big family. We help each other and support each other. We are a school that has an excellent academy program. On MCAS, I scored advanced, advanced and proficient, but an education is more than only math and English. An education should include arts enrichment, an activity that develop the whole person. Unfortunately, we don't have many enrichment program for our students. This is one area that our school needs more support. We don't want our student to only learn English in our school, but we need to have more opportunities. Please make sure that the budget supports schools where young people can develop both, both as student and as people. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Kay. Key, excuse me, Key.
Uh, good evening. My name is Lucia Taylor and I'm a parent of a tenth grader of Binka and I come from Italy and I'm a member of the School of Site Council. I live in Dorchester and, um, as immigrant myself, I know how hard is to be an immigrant in new, in a new country, but I can only imagine what the experience is like for a teenager. My son is doing very well at the Binka and is very happy at this school. The school, we help him to go to a good colleges and have a great future in America. To have success as an immigrant student need more time. I am here today to say having after-school support is very important, particularly when many of the parents do not speak English themselves. When our children are in school, we know that they are safe and productive and also they have the support of a really great teachers. They are dedicated to help them in all their needs. Our children are growing up in a new Boston that is multilingual, multicultural community and Binka is teaching, teaching my son more than just English and math, but also how to work with many different types of people and how to solve problems between groups. He has learned that if we stay together, we are stronger. And as a mother, a parent, I believe a lot in education and because education, I think, is the future of our world. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Do Kajomiti, followed by Michelle Pierre and Peggy Wiesenberg.
Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Do Kaya Miti, followed by Michelle Pierre and Peggy Wiesenberg.
Good evening, member of committee. Mr. McDonough, good evening. My name is Dr. K. Might. I'm a byproduct of Boston Public School. I'm from Haiti originally. I'm an engineer byproduct. I went to school through engineering and when I came here, I understood exactly what education was. I had the great privilege to learn from you and I've acquired so much and I wanted to give something back to my students. I understand the Great America has to do with access. It has to do with opportunities. It also has to do with transparency and decision-making. I teach public speaking. I teach policy in college and try to understand and balance the economic disparity for poor people. I am poor, but I want to give to my community. When I heard about the closing of my school, West Roxbury, I went back to history and I tried to understand why did we accept the money from GATE, the $5 million? When it's done, we start closing school. I tried to understand exactly why my school, the first school that I started with, Boston High School, because there were people like me, we closed it. I tried to understand Dorchester High School, where I developed the first engineering program in Boston, we closed it. I moved to West Roxbury and I tried to embrace kids who spoke at least about seven or eight different languages and I have them right here. Every single year, we have some of them who get accepted to Pasi. Some of them get the GATE scholarship. Understand that. You close the school, the 11 graders, you move them to a different school. They are going to be a number. Nobody will know about them. In each school, they always think, the guidance say, "Well, if you don't have three or four years in school, you are not eligible for certain financial aid or just scholarship." I am a math major. I am an engineer. I try to understand the equation of closing school. I don't really see it. I heard you and I tried to listen. You started in my school at West Roxbury. When you look at the grids, you see exactly where the kids live. So, it's helped me understand, we are not talking about just money there. We are talking about a different dynamics. We are talking about a different movement. My question, why can't we be transparent in the decision-making? You know?
Excuse me, doctor.
I feel that if it is not about something else--
Sir?
--we will probably think about merging schools. You heard it loudly about the student. This is not the great equation for us. Closing school is not going to create--
Sir?
Closing school is not going to respond to the disparity that we have in Boston. I'm begging for you just to merge the schools. Thank you very much. Thank you, Dr. K. Might.
Next we'll hear, excuse me, next we'll hear from Michelle Pierre, followed by Peggy Wiesenberg and Mateo Koka.
Good evening, Ms. Pierre.
Good evening. Good evening. Are we able to hear me? Thank you. What can I add to what my colleagues just stated? We've spent days, we've spent many times hearing the plight of the children. We've heard from individuals telling us that this is not the right course of action and we have stated over and over that this is not a very good deal. What is the message that we are sending to the general public, to the students, to the parents, to the staff, to administration? Are we saying that in Boston, there is no room for the poor to negotiate? No room for the poor to have a voice? What is the message being sent by the school board committee if they agree with this vote of closing West Roxbury at high? What is the message being sent by the superintendent of schools? Are we saying that whatsoever the superintendent or the school district agreed to do, decides on, the school committee is on board and is their lucky and will do whatsoever they ask? Are we saying that the establish, the establish balance of power is non-functioning here in Boston? Is there a voice of reason in Boston? Or are we so hardened that our individual drive, by our individual drives, that we've become inhuman, senseless to the cry, to the heartache of our children? Boston has a very rich history of pioneering goodness in the world.
20 seconds.
We led the Boston Tea Party. We led the Freedom Revolution and now if we vote to close the West Roxbury Academy, we are reversing back the clock. We are saying no to basic human compassion and basic human rights for due process. Was not afforded to the schools or the voice of the children and the staff were not heard. Perhaps that's the point. Build more prison, more state-of-the-art offices, more beautiful parks right around West Roxbury Academy, but close the schools. If we are about the children, let's keep Westy open. Thank you.
Excuse me, for folks who don't have a seat, if you have an open seat next to you, if you could just raise your hand. So then, if folks want to come up and sit down, alternatively, there's a room in behind that is, has open seats as well. So, if anyone wants to grab a seat, you can see where open seats are.
Good evening. It's Peggy Wiesenberg. And the secretary is passing out two handouts tonight. I passed out a handout two days ago that hopefully those of you who were in there will get. What is emerging and has been emerging over the last few days is that we need a place for discussion and dialogue about the place for smaller, yes, more costly, but nurturing schools like Boston International, like Community Academy, like Middle School Academy and like West Roxbury Academy in our portfolio of schools with the bigger comprehensive high schools that are accredited. I want to tell you that you heard tonight from Boston International Academy, when Superintendent Pezzan proposed that school, it wasn't a proposal for a school. It was a proposal for one year and then kids would segue into the other high schools. And we came forward and said, "That's not the best idea. We need a four-year program." And it was based in the building that Community Academy is now in. So, I think we have to learn from that history and I look forward to hearing what we plan to do with Community Academy and Middle School Academy because I think a short-term intervention is not the way to go.
20 seconds.
So, here are my questions. Last meeting, I think Superintendent McDonough said there were 20 schools with projected enrollments smaller than the maximum teacher-student ratio. Which schools, which grades, which programs? General Ed, ELL or SPED? Of the $5 million to implement extended learning time, and I gave a grid out last week about the racial and economic makeup of all the schools that were awarded and several of the Level 3 that didn't get awarded. How much is going to each school selected in this first round? What are we leasing for $1 million? How much is Boston spending to lease modular classrooms at the Haley, not a high-poverty school, instead of co-locating the Haley Grade 6 to 8 at the Rogers Middle School or the Irving Facility? What are we buying for $340K to expand Digital Academy Pilot at the Edison in Alston-Brighton? Can the city find external funds to underwrite the expansion and redirect the $340K GSP dollars to Level 3 and Level 4 schools in the poverty corridor, Roxbury, Dorchester, Matapan? What if any of the GSP budget or the $16.8 million in external funds like Title I and IDEA are going to educational management organizations like UP, Blueprint, Boston Plan for Excellence, ABCD, I think is coming into Dorchester Academy and other educational management organizations? Last meeting, you said we'd save $1 million, reducing K to eight networks, possibly from six to five. What does that $1 million pay for in each network? And one of the handouts is just something I pulled off the Herald website. Explain what we're buying for the $340K for school leadership compensation reform. And last, here's a suggestion. Last meeting, you said that you had to cut 60 to 150 FTE to save $12 million, not including the transportation. Can Boston zero out the close to $4 million that funds 75 school police officers and recall laid-off officers as needed, like substitute teachers, or use Boston PD, Boston Public Police Department officers and cut back on, and that's another department, but the overtime details?
Ms. Wiesenberg.
String that and put the money into the schools. And I attached just something I pulled off the Herald, maybe they have more detail to pay, but there's a list of 81 police officers and sergeants and truant officers, et cetera.
Thank you, Ms. Wiesenberg.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mateo Koka.
Good evening, sir.
Today, I'm less belligerent, so it's gonna be easy for all of us. All right. So, my name is Mateo Koka. You'll know that. I'm affiliated with Westy. And first, I want to just summarize the primary reason of this wide debate of voting Mr. McDonough recommendation whether or not closing, well, West Roxbury Academy. And the four, I say that you guys should go with Martinez's plan, Christina's plan. That would be articulated, but overall, I just give a summary of it. One of the main reasons why actually these four schools are going to be closed is because there's an overflow of $43 to $51 million on our budget, right? And only closing four schools, we cut $2.1 million. Something that, in my opinion, is really lively, is a really like a minimum amount sum compared to the $1 billion, .500 million that we have on Boston Public School. So, the plan was basically that we were doing is that by relocating all these kids, it's not only gonna to be like emotionally and bureaucratically really expensive for all of us, but it's also gonna be really, really bad for the kids. The thing is that by some research that, then, we spent nearly $50 bucks for each yellow bus. We have 15 buses in the morning, 50 buses in the evening, so 30 bus a day for 10:50. We all know that we need to have 200 schools, days of school every year. So, I jump one, 200 times 30 times 50 is nearly $300,000 bucks. We just can't cut that just by making a bureaucratic agreement with MBTA that's not gonna cost so much bureaucratic work nor so many money, but just increasing the flux of 36 buses in front of our school.
20 seconds.
And yeah, saving $300,000. Also, our infrastructure can hospital 800, 800 people, 1,800 people, and we have only 1,100 people in our school. So, it means 700 people can come in our school, but the problem is that those 700 people are not hospitaling our school and 40% of the school potential is wasted. And that 40% is the school budget. That means that 40% of these places that are not used are taken from the school budget money. By so saying that those money are the overflow are taken by us, from us, and that's why the reason that you guys are closing the school. So, we can get all these schools' kids, all these school kids in our school, meaning that all these middle school, 7, 8 grade kids can come to our school by so closing the infrastructure and just using our infrastructure by also saving on the money that actually we are spending on those infrastructure. And the last say that I want to say that the real solution for any problem can only be found by one thing, not by getting rid of the problem, as my math teacher always told me, but by actually finding the error that I made in the problem. And the real mistake that I made in the problem is that how the system is organized. Because money that are being wasted are money that can be saved, as I just saw with $300,000 and with 40% of our school potential. Meaning that we can change this only by finding the error and not closing the education. So, we will give you the plan articulated to all of you guys. We will send that to you so that you guys can study that and we consider that because we can save money by that.
Mr. O'Neill, that concludes our speakers for this budget hearing.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. I want to thank everyone who spoke tonight. Your input actually is listened to by every member here. We do pay attention to your thoughts and this is important. We are in the middle of a process. Many of you were at Monday night's hearing at the Lilla Frederick School and you saw our committee members ask, we did hear from a number of members of the public as well. We asked a number of questions. We are anticipating answers from the district later on tonight. There will be another budget hearing next Thursday night, so not tomorrow night, but a week from Thursday, at English High School. The committee will be there. This continues to be an iterative process. We ask questions, but we gain, our knowledge is gained, our questions are informed by the feedback that you give us. So, please know that the committee listens very closely to the comments that you have made, the suggestions that you have made. We do, I do want to particularly mention to the West Roxbury Academy students that have referenced a proposal that Ms. Martine has made on behalf of the student council there. And we are asking the district to pay, to take a look at that and give us their thoughts on that idea, you know, the likelihood, et cetera. So, we are asking the district to pay close attention, particularly to that proposal that had been very thoughtful and has been referenced by a number of people. So, we are listening. We will have, we will ask the district to respond to that at our next meeting, which is next Thursday, the 19th, at English High School. So, this is an iterative process. It does take time for us to work through the budget, but your input is important and heard by all the members, so thank you for attending for that. We are gonna take a, literally a one-minute break and then we will start our regular school committee hearing, which is now exactly a half hour behind schedule. But thank you for everyone for attending for the budget portion.
Thank you.
For the delayed start of this meeting, which was following the budget hearing. So we'll begin with the pledge of allegiance.
We'll begin now, I have already read previously, but I know for the record I'm supposed to do it. Tonight's proceedings are being broadcast live by Boston City TV, Comcast Channel 24, and RCN Channel 13. It will be rebroadcast at a later date. So we'll move on right now to the superintendent's report. I present to you our superintendent, Mr. John McDonough.
Good evening. I want to join the school committee in welcoming Tommy Chang to our district and to tonight's meeting. I've had the opportunity to spend some time with him this week, and I am very impressed by his intentionality and his approach. And just so he knows, Boston is a special place. It is the birthplace of public education in our nation. And as I have said before, serving as superintendent of this school district has been the highest honor of my career. I would expect his experience to be no less rewarding. I'm committed to working with them over the course of the next few months to ensure a smooth and highly effective transition on behalf of our students as he prepares to arrive here full-time. Our welcome to you. I'm going to begin my report tonight by acknowledging some of our impressive and dedicated students. First, today at the Boston City Council, they honored the East Boston Hockey Team during a short ceremony in the council chambers for their victory in the city championship last month. They are just one of the teams that was victorious in a city championship this season, and we tip our hats and our hockey sticks to them as our city champions. The Jeremiah E. Burke High School Boys Basketball Team will be honored this weekend when they are awarded the MIAA Team Sportsmanship Award for Basketball. This is a result of an assessment of their conduct during the MIAA State Basketball Finals at the DCU Center in Worcester, and they make us very proud. This Friday night, we'll also be rooting for the Fenway Girls Basketball Team, as they head to Worcester to take on the girls from Millis High School for the state title. We wish them well. On a slightly different note, I'd like to give a shout-out to Nathan Hermida, a senior at Boston Latin School. Nathan was selected on Wednesday evening to be part of Team Adam on the national TV show, The Voice. We are all so proud of this Hyde Park native. Congratulations, Nathan, and good luck going forward with the competition. This past Saturday, I had the opportunity to attend the annual citywide science fair. This event is among our best every year. To see our students beaming with pride as present, as they present their projects on display is very exciting. I have to tell you, if I ever aspired to have the level of knowledge, cohesiveness, understanding of both the designation of a hypothesis and a disciplined way on how to prove that it is either right or wrong, I would be very proud of myself as an individual. These students were so far ahead of ever, wherever I ever wished to be. So my hat's off to them, my hat's off to the academic team, and particularly our director of science, Pam Pelletier, for their efforts in working with Northeastern University in this, in this citywide fair. This is the first stage, as you recall. Many of our winners of the fair go on to state competition, and then some of those will hopefully go on to national competition. There was a BPS student last year who came out first in the entire nation in science. Friday is National Digital Learning Day, and our schools are actively engaged in promoting not just the day, but the opportunity to participate in digital learning communities for educators. Our OIIT department is spearheading these opportunities, which includes a live virtual teacher panel this evening, a Twitter chat tomorrow discussing what makes a digital champion, and the chance to hear from schools about the ways they incorporate digital learning into their classrooms. If you're interested in learning more, you can visit bostonpublicschools.org/technology. Tonight, as we continue our conversation on our FY16 budget recommendation, I'd want to follow up on the issue of assignments for students impacted by the proposed school closures. As we stated last Wednesday evening, our goal is to ensure that the families currently enrolled in these schools, as well as the families who may have listed any of them on their school choice form, have equal access to available school options as those families not impacted. To that end, we have intentionally altered the registration and assignment calendar for rounds, rounds one and two. Assignments from round one for transition grades kindergarten six and nine will be delayed until early April. A Connect Ed call went out to families on Sunday evening to inform them of this news. It is also posted on our website and communicated through social media. We know and apologize that this is an inconvenience for families waiting to decide among many school options in and outside of BPS. Yet the proposed closure impacts more than 1,400 students, and we need to ensure that they are not penalized by the timing of this process. Students currently in schools, proposed for closure, who would otherwise remain in the school, are receiving new choice forms and will receive a priority, second only to sibling priority, as they choose a new school. We're taking steps to ensure they can make informed decisions, including counseling high school students and setting up tours in our schools. Those forms will be due back by April 6th. If any school proposed for closure does not close, students will continue in their schools as planned. However, we want to make sure they have the opportunity to act at the same time as their peers who are considering new schools. On Monday of this week, I had the opportunity to testify before the state legislature's Chapter 70 Foundation Budget Review Commission. I was happy to see that I was joined in that effort by a good number of our parents and our advocates. The commission is holding a number of public hearings around the state as they consider approaching a new calculation of Chapter 70 funding, which constitutes the majority of funds we receive from the Commonwealth. Just to put this in perspective, over the last 10 years, Boston's foundation budget has increased by 36%, but our Chapter 70 aid has only increased by 5%. This lack of financial support runs counter to the state's committee This lack of financial support runs counter to the state's commitment and our commitment to closing the achievement gap for all of our students. Tomorrow, BPS will participate in a city council hearing that is looking at transitional services of students ages 14 to 22. Under the leadership of Deputy Superintendent Eileen Nash, BPS has worked with Sbedpac, Mass Advocates for Children, and the Inclusive Concurrent Enrollment Program from the State Executive Office of Education to support special education students in school readiness, adult learning, or independent living. It is worth mentioning, just last month, 200 of our special education students were hosted at UMass Boston for a transition fair, which was generally considered a huge success. We look forward to sharing the progress we have made with the city council tomorrow. I do have a few announcements in terms of staff transitions that I would like to share with you. First, our network superintendent for Network A, Margarita Ruiz, has been chosen by the Salem, Massachusetts Public Schools to be their new leader and as superintendent of schools. Margarita has spent many years in this district, starting out as a teacher and becoming a very strong principal, and now an incredible leader and supporter of schools. Salem is her home city. Our schools, our families, and our students in Charlestown, in East Boston, and all of us at BPS both recognize her strengths and will miss her dearly, but we wish her well. Cheryl Watson-Harris, our network superintendent for Network D, who covers Jamaica Plain and Brighton and Austin, has been chosen as a borough director for New York City schools. In that role, she will continue to be in a position within a similar network structure to lead a network team in supporting schools in New York City. New York City is Cheryl's home. And like Margarita, Cheryl has been a teacher, a leader, and now a network, and now has assumed network superintendent position as a leader of schools in our city. Cheryl has been intentional on her work that focuses specifically on ensuring that there are greater opportunities for Black and Latino males within the schools in her district. She, as a district, adopted the Ten Boys Program within every school. Her passion will be missed. Her service will be missed in Boston, and we wish her well. Now, as you all know, my Chief of Staff, Melissa Dunn, I'm going to get emotional here, Melissa, will leave the district at the end of next week as she prepares to move to San Francisco to lead the digital district transformation of the San Francisco Unified School District. I cannot overstate the impact Melissa has had on this school district over the past She has truly been more than my right hand. On a good day, her workday is 16 hours long. As many of you know, she's also a proud Matter Hunt mom of Lilia, who attends the Matter Hunt as a proud BPS student. But her dedication and passion for each and every student in our district has been evident and every day she's worked here. I am eternally grateful for the personal sacrifices she has made for this district and for her tireless service to the city. Thank you, Melissa. I've asked Ross Wilson to assume the role of Chief of Staff during this time of transition. Ross is well-equipped for this role, and I more than look forward to working with him to ensure a smooth transition for Tommy Chang. Finally, with Ross's transition, we've asked Emily Kesselback to lead the Office of Human Capital. I am confident that Emily will continue to execute on our human capital reform efforts as we prepare to launch another early hiring season. Finally, tonight, I need to acknowledge that this has been an extraordinarily difficult week in the light of the incident that took place last week involving English High School. Just to be clear, here is what I know. Sean Harrison faces very serious charges connected to the shooting of one of the students who attended English High School. He is recovering. He will emerge physically intact. A police investigation continues, as does our own internal inquiry that will seek to fully understand every detail of this employee's employment history with BPS. I spent time at the school on Friday. Mayor Walsh and Commissioner Evans spent more than two hours at the school yesterday. We have great confidence in the educators and staff that work there. Last night, I was joined by leadership from the Boston Police Department at a meeting with parents at the school. They, rightfully so, have many questions and many concerns. We are committed to being with them step by step as we get through this together. Last night, we heard from parents who are angry and worried, but more than anything else, they are involved, and that is what makes me grateful to them. We have nearly 10,000 employees in this district. Every day, they go to work and do incredible things that hardly ever get recognition. I stand with the employees of the Boston Public Schools who go above and beyond for students every day. We cannot and will not let one individual create an atmosphere of fear in our schools. I also want to call out and thank Sam Acevedo for his comments last night. And in trying to make sense of what has happened to us all, but particularly to our students and our staff, he asked people to recall what happened almost two years ago today. When thousands of people lined the streets of our city feeling that they were safe and unsuspecting and unknowing of danger, and tragedy struck, one that no one could have We have an obligation as an employer, and many parents want to know, how did we not see a red flag? Someone must have known something. Our internal inquiry will hopefully answer this question completely, but it is worth noting that all proper procedures were followed. Core background checks were conducted and completed on this employee, and all of our disciplinary protocols were taken and taken appropriately. And like two years ago, it requires us to think, what are our standards now? What should our protocols be? And we knew that above all else, that our students and their parents and those that have a concern regarding anything that they deem as inappropriate and untoward, that they have a safe place and a safe way with confidentiality and anonymity to report that concern, our obligation will be then to follow up. And that is why we did establish the hotline, which we refer to as the Space Safe Hotline. It is staffed 24/7 by trained staff from our Counseling and Intervention Center. I don't have the number here. Somebody should give me the number, but we are in the process of sharing that broadly with every school, thank you, and ensuring that all of our students have access to it. The number, the Safe Space Hotline, is 617-592-2378. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. I'd like to open up the questions and discussion by committee members. Ms. Campbell?
Thank you, Superintendent McDonough. I wanted to just follow up on two things, kind of unrelated. First, I would just request that the investigation that the school department is doing also be an independent investigation because in my tenure on the school committee, we've had other issues with HR, people getting through who shouldn't have gotten through. And as part of that independent investigation, I hope that we can have some stricter guidelines about taking remarks to young women as seriously as I know we would take remarks that were racist. This is, so my understanding from the newspaper is that there were remarks made that were inappropriate to young women. I don't know the particulars. I'm just, what I've read in the paper, but I just hope as part of this independent, someone who's not an employee of the school department, can really use this as a case to look at broader patterns and so forth. My second remark is a follow-up of a remark I made at the last school committee meeting, and I just want to clarify or thank Headmaster Ann Clark. I had asked about the Boston Arts Academy admissions process, and they did change it so that it is on the Boston Public School website. It hadn't been, so that has changed, has been made, and I appreciate that. And she clarified that the request for grades for transcripts, and now I'm having a moment, I'm forgetting the second thing that she's asked, oh, the essay, that these were not conditional upon acceptance. So she actually, and I, she graciously followed up, and we kind of highlighted an issue, something as we moved to a digital age, that if parents give permission, there could be transfer of transcripts within the Boston Public Schools because, much to my surprise, that doesn't happen now. So an eighth grader gets in to a whatever, they're going from Edwards and they're going to the Burke, that there's not a transfer of, at least this is my, a transfer of transcripts, at least this is my understanding from Headmaster Clark. So I think as we hopefully move towards some kind of a universal enrollment, that we just want to make it as easy as possible for parents. Scrambling to get paper transcripts and get them over to a school is a barrier. So anyway, but I just want to give a thank you to Headmaster Clark and also identifying the larger issue of digital communication.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Campbell. Ms. Robinson?
Yes, thank you, Superintendent, for your report. I always am excited when I hear the successes of our students, so, you know, thank you. I know you share a lot of the highs and the lows of what's taking place in the district, but when we hear students doing well athletically and, you know, academically, as well as in the arts, it's always exciting to hear. I know we get the reports of the tough news taking place, but it's also important if we can just receive that news as well, so we can celebrate with the students, especially if we are in those communities and we run into the parents or parents in the community. It's a collective celebration, so I'd appreciate having more of that correspondence. Also, there are things that also take place at the schools, and I sent our team another celebratory event in spite of what's taken place at English High School. There were several churches that have come together to mentor students, and River of Life Church and Heart Change Fellowship Church celebrated the successes of the English High School students who were on the honor roll and who also had perfect attendance. And they celebrated with a luncheon for the students, and some parents came out, and it was really special for those students, in spite of what's taken place, you know, in the last several days, to have the focus away from the negative and on the positive. And so when events like that also take place, it's important to highlight and, you know, and celebrate the students. I was personally encouraged, I was able to slip over to celebrate with those students, and I was encouraged because you saw the diversity of the students, the diversity of their abilities. There were students with special needs who had perfect attendance. And we also see the correlation between perfect attendance and the honor roll, as we saw with those students. I want to highlight Maria Gonzalez-Bow, who is the coordinator at English High School of this program, and just to celebrate her and the work that she's done. And then the Emmanuel Gospel Center and Ruth Wong, who oversaw the mentoring process as well. So when we hear the successes of our students, it's exciting to share with the community, the larger community, but also with one another, so that we can continue to cheer the students on in the work that they're doing. So thank you for your report.
Absolutely. Thank you. Any other questions or comments about the superintendent's report? Dr. Uriarte?
Question. I was really, really happy when I saw that you were opening a hotline and that...
Microphone, please.
Opening a hotline where students can call. Could you talk a little bit more about, you know, issues of confidentiality? How, you know, how do you expect students to participate? Also, is it multilingual? Will there be capacity for other languages in that hotline?
So actually, I'll share with you that this was something that, in sort of our internal reflection on the events of the last week and thinking through, what is our role as a district? Then, it was really just yesterday morning when we began to have conversation about this issue and what would vehicles be that would allow for that to happen. So while there may be additional things that we can do, the approach that we took was to build on the Bully Hotline that we had established. So we already have protocols and procedures and knowledge of people where to appropriately direct somebody. Some of it is just intake of information.
Right.
But then there has to be a filtering to ensure that that information gets to the right person. Some of those calls would not be things that we, as a district, would appropriately be investigating. In some instances, we would refer to BPD. In some instances, based on information reported, we would have obligations to file 51As, which then would trigger another process. So I'm very sensitive to the second part of your question is whether there are multilingual people who are answering the phone. I don't know the answer to that.
Next time.
Right now... Right now, I can tell you, right now, it is a very small staff that rotates, that is in Counseling and Intervention Center. So we'll get back to you on the specifics, but also take back, how do we enhance what we're offering to ensure that if there are language barriers, there is somebody already there that puts them in even a safer place by speaking their own language with them?
My concern always with, you know, with something like a hotline, is what happens after a person calls in and who follows up, what kind of confidentiality there will be? So, you know, if at some point you could talk, because I mean, the original idea is really great, but the implementation of it can be tricky unless, you know, it's done in a very professional manner, so that, you know, people don't get accused and you're having to do all kinds of... And the issue of, you know, the multilingual, I, very often, students, when I've gone and talked to them, they have really compelling stories of things that have happened to them in the schools. And if there's a way for them to communicate that in their own language, you know, I think there will be much more participation of these students and their parents in the schools.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. LaCanto.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Superintendent. So I'll just mention something else on the Safe Space Hotline. I'll echo my fellow members' sentiments that it's a great step forward. And something I might add is, if there's acknowledging that this is in the very early stages, if we can have some sort of multimodal approach to reporting, I don't know that social media might be the right vehicle, but certainly, you know, an email option, as well as some other sort of maybe website-based report, to the extent that that can be created, would be much appreciated. I might also note that the BSAC, Boston Student Advisory Council Group, that I know the district intends to include on this outreach, they've been heavily at work on a code of conduct pamphlet and a number of other items to talk about something that's in the same zone. I mean, we're all talking about just safety of the school community, and so to the extent that there can be some synergy there, I think that would be a great thing. Just a couple of questions. So you mentioned your testimony on Monday at the Foundation Budget Review Commission hearing. To the extent that that is publicly available, the actual testimony that you submitted to the commission, if that can be made part of our budget page for fiscal year 16?
That'd be great.
That would be much appreciated.
I know that we sent a copy to the School Committee, but we'd be happy to publish it on the budget section of the website as well.
I know many of the parents that have been so integral in our budget process over the last few years would be interested to see that. So thank you. And also, I heard you allude a little bit to the supports that we're providing to potentially displace students with, in connection with school closures that have been proposed, and something that a few of us asked about at the last meeting around the idea of how we might support displaced students if, in fact, the proposed closures go forward. If that's not a part of tonight's presentation, if we could hear about that at next week's meeting, that would be much appreciated.
Yeah, we'd be happy to respond to that tonight, actually.
Super, super. And the last thing is, on a bright note, I think we need to get a tote board to count down how many more superintendent reports we have from you before the end of the school year. I was just trying to add it up in my head. I think we're at seven, so I'll be counting in my head if not anything else. But good luck to Ms. Dodd, good luck to Ms. Ruiz, and Ms. Watson-Harris as well.
Thank you, Mr. LaCanto. I will strictly say, we're never one to stand in front of someone moving on professionally, particularly if they have an opportunity to be a superintendent or a network district leader in another city, and so I congratulate those who are moving on. It is clearly a loss for the district. It's also a sign of the strength of the team that Mr. McDonough put in place and the strength of the network superintendent model. And it's a very important model to provide support to our school leaders. And so it's an unfortunate fact of life that people want the talent from Boston. So I recognize those folks who are moving on. Ms. Dodd is a different story, because she is going to San Francisco, and it's a wonderful city, and we're good friends with the folks there, but until you get on the plane, Ms. Dodd, all bets are off.
That's sweet.
So with that, and Superintendent, particularly with regard to the situation that you talked about at English High School, and thank you for sharing with us to date. We look forward to a more in-depth report on that. I do know as a policymaking board, we are charged with setting policy for the district, approving a budget, hiring a superintendent, and evaluating superintendent. We don't get involved in individual personnel items. Having said that, there are some potential policy implications here, as Ms. Campbell rightfully points out. And so I want to strongly encourage you, we cannot require it because we don't get involved in individual personnel items, but I kind of second what Ms. Campbell was saying there. There are a lot of outside human resource professionals, both in this city and also through the Council of Great City Schools, that I think it would be worth your while, I would encourage you, along the lines of what Ms. Campbell said, to, as you go through the internal investigation, I know you're working in conjunction with Boston Police, et cetera, and I know you're thinking in terms of this individual circumstance, but then the policy implications off of that, about how we hire employees, how employees transfer between schools, how we discipline employees, and how we, you know, how folks are aware of that, as a school leader and one school is hiring someone from another school, how they get aware of issues that have been raised. And I would encourage you, as much as I have tremendous respect for our folks within the district, it may be worth your while to either ask the Council for Great City Schools for some thoughts on that issue, or alternatively, reach out to some of the human resource professionals here in other industries, or in higher ed, or that type of thing, to just kind of, for your own sanity, to get some second thoughts on that, and we will ask, we will put as a future agenda item for you to come back and kind of report the policy implications of this for this board, because we will be keenly interested in your findings and thoughts you may have from there. Is that acceptable to the full members? Okay, thank you. So with that, with no other questions or discussions, I'll entertain a motion to receive the superintendent's report.
Second.
Thank you. So there was a motion by Ms. Robinson, second by Ms. Campbell, any discussion or objection to the motion? Any objection to receiving the superintendent's report by unanimous consent? Hearing none, the motion carries. We'll move on now to general public comment. Ms. Sullivan?
Thank you, Mr. O'Neill. Each speaker will have three minutes to speak, and I'll remind you when you have 30 seconds remaining. We'll begin with Johnny McGinnis, followed by...
Excuse me, there are how many speakers for public comment?
Three or four, depending on who's still with us.
Okay, thank you.
We'll begin with Johnny McGinnis, followed by Yvonne Powell and Maria Farrell.
Good evening, Mr. McGinnis.
Good evening, Chairman O'Neill. Superintendent McDonough and committee members. Want to read a statement about school closings. The proposed School Department budget recommends closing or consolidating five schools impacting 1,400 students and their families. School closures have a profound effect on students and their families, particularly when they are announced late in the school year. After families have made their plans for the next school year, past school closures in Boston have also made a major disproportionate impact on BPS students of color, leading to an ongoing investigation of BPS closings by the U.S. Department of Education Office for Civil Rights. Given the recent BPS experience and the disruptive impact of school closures, Beam believes that closures should be carefully and transparently considered and should be driven by the new school facilities plan, not rushed as part of this budget process. School closures during the spring 2015 budget process will severely disrupt the plans students and families have already made for the 2015-2016 school year. The last time the School Committee voted on school closures was in early December of 2010, well before the first round of student assignments. This year, the School Committee would not vote on closures until March 25th, with an April 6 deadline for impacted families to choose new schools. Students and their families need adequate notice in order to carefully review their options for schools and to make thoughtful decisions about which schools best meet their needs. School closure recommendations should be part of the long-term facilities planning process, not the annual compressed budget planning process. In the Mayor's State of the City address and his education transition team report, Mayor Walsh committed the city to a thoughtful, equitable 10-year school facilities plan. His transition team report states, "All facilities, decisions regarding construction or closure of schools should be made with community impact," sorry, "community input and through the lens of equity." Beam urges the School Committee to not approve the recommended school closures and to include consideration of school closures in the new school facilities plan.
All right. Thank you, Mr. McIsaac. And sir, you didn't actually introduce yourself. All the committee members know you, but I want to make sure people in the public who are watching know that you...
All right, thank you. All right. Yes, so I am Johnny McGinnis. I am the president of the Black Educations Alliance of Massachusetts. And I also teach at a teacher-run school called the Boston Teachers Union K-8 Pilot School.
Thank you, Mr. McGinnis.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Yvonne Powell, and she'll be followed by Maria Farrell and Ken Hawks.
Good evening, Ms. Powell.
Good evening. Thank you, everyone. I come before you to ask that you not lose sight of two groups of schools and students. One are the Level 5 students in those schools, and the other are the charter schools that are not Horace Mann schools. The Level 5 schools, we both know, we all know, it is the Dever and it is the Holland, and the hybrid, the Dearborn. Those three schools will be under state control for the next three years. The state currently receives quarterly reports on the two schools that are under their control. I will expect that as the next year rolls through, that they will receive similar reports from the Dearborn. I ask that you not lose sight of those three schools on your radar screen as you go forward, particularly not losing sight of the transition from state supervision back to BPS and Boston School Committee control. And the second group are the charter schools. I was a little disturbed to read recently in a January memo that Commissioner Chester said, that in fact, the Boston Renaissance Charter School is on probation for the second Any school that's on probation should be under the supervision of this body. These are still BPS children. I'm sorry, they're still Boston children, not under your control, but they are Boston children. There were two other schools that Commissioner Chester wrote about as well in his report to DESI that were of concern. One was the Up Academy Charter School of Boston, which he was recommending that they increase their enrollment. And the other school was the Helen Y. Davis Leadership Academy Charter Public School, which also had asked to, in fact, increase their enrollment by 316 students, and he had recommended that further school action was needed by the Board of Trustees before he could recommend positive action.
20 seconds.
There are just those three charter schools that are obviously on the radar for the state. Please do not lose sight of the charter schools, even as we care passionately about the students who are part of the Boston Public School system. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Powell.
Thank you. Our next speakers are Maria Farrell and Ken Hawks.
Hello, good evening, and thank you for this opportunity. In order of full disclosure, I would just like to say that I do work for Counselor McCarthy as his education advisor, but I'm here as a parent, as I also have five children in the Boston Public School system. I first would like to say...
Thank you.
I first would like to give a kudos to the Boston Public School Department, because I did attend for Counselor McCarthy an event at the Greenwood about the school closures and addressing the parents, and I was thoroughly, honestly impressed with the systems they had in place, the conversations they had with the families, and how prepared they were to answer their questions and really address their concerns. So I've been advocating for Boston Public Schools for a long time. I have children at the Roosevelt and at the John D. O'Brien. So it's been a very strong relationship for the last 10 years. So I just want to say thank you and a very well-done job with that. But that said, I am concerned, the School Committee a few years ago had promised to try to give us better quality choice schools in our district, in our neighborhood. In High Park-Mattapan, we have five schools. In those last two years, there hasn't really been done much done to help this. So now we have two schools that are being proposed to close, we have two schools that are turnaround, and we don't have very much else to offer the people in the community. So the Roosevelt, at the current time, is the only school that's a Tier 2 school, and we don't have the seats, we don't have availability, and it greatly impacts our neighborhood and the residents looking for quality school choices. So I understand the BPS budget, and I've been a part of this for a long time, and I know we're struggling, but that is not going to answer, closing these schools is not going to help fix the problems we're having in our neighborhood for the quality choices. And I just want to mention, I'd met with the principal at the Rogers', and I was very impressed that he's trying so hard, he's done amazing strides in the last year with the school, but specifically was the, similar to the Boston Compact, that they've worked with the Boston Renaissance School to try to form a pathway program, and that's like an answer, we talk about looking for answers and solutions. So we know we're under enrolled, High Park has an awful lot of charter schools, they're amazing, and I understand that we need the choices, but that might be an opportunity to explore, you know, forming partnerships a little bit more thoroughly and making those pathways to give people, families, quality options. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Farrell.
Thank you. Our final speaker is Ken Hawks.
Is Mr. Hawks here? Any other speakers, Ms. Sullivan?
No. Mr. O'Neill, that concludes our speakers for general public comment.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Sullivan. Our first action item this evening is the Consent Calendar, which consists of grants for approval totaling $313,538 and two international travel requests. Are there any questions or discussions from the committee on the consent calendar? Dean Coleman?
I do want to thank the superintendent for your staff's excellent work in improving the ability to report and identify the outcomes for the grants in terms of being, are being able to track the actual productivity of those grants. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Dean Coleman. Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented.
So move.
So there's a motion by Ms. Campbell, second by Mr. LaCanto. Any discussion or objection to the motion? Any objection to approving the motion by unanimous consent? Hearing none, the consent calendar is approved. Our next action item is the approval of the contract for superintendent designate Dr. Tommy Chang. You'll recall that on March 3, this committee selected Dr. Tommy Chang as the next superintendent of Boston Public Schools and agreed to enter into contract negotiations with Dr. Chang. I want to thank my colleague, Mr. LaCanto, for taking the lead on behalf of the committee with this work. And if approved, this contract will be available to the public once it is signed by all parties. It'd have to be signed by Mr. Chang, by myself representing the School Committee, the city auditor, and the mayor. And so once that is signed by all, the entire contract will be available to public, available to the public, as is the previous contracts, et cetera. So at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. LaCanto to highlight the terms of the proposed agreement.
Great. Excuse me, and thank you, Mr. Chair, and I just wanted to say thank you to my fellow members, all the hard work and advice and consent they provided on this whole process. It's truly been a team effort, not only with the members, but also with various other members of the legal staff and the financial staff, to help us get to a truly meaningful agreement in the context of where BPS presently stands. So we had a number of guiding principles for conducting this contract negotiation, and as you all know, and as the chair pointed out, we had available several past contracts for reference, including Dr. Johnson's contracts from 2007 and 2011. for reference, including Dr. Johnson's contracts from 2007 and 2011, as well as Dr. Pezzanz from the '90s. And so, you know, in terms of just trying to think about the, both the length of service, which, you know, obviously was in everyone's mutual interest to have a long-term agreement with Dr. Chang and the district, as well as compensation, those documents were very instructive. And so, we've reached a five-year, or we're proposing for consideration by the committee, a five-year agreement with Dr. Chang. And taking the context, again, some of the guiding principles from Dr. Johnson's last contract, she started in 2007 at roughly $275,000 a year for compensation, and right after the economic downturn, she reduced her salary to, I believe, $267,000 approximately in coordination with reductions that were felt across the city. In, as a further data point, we have the Council of Great City Schools data, which is publicly available, that points to a average superintendent compensation number of $260,000 per year for districts of a similar size, as districts from 50,000 to 100,000 students. And so, the number that we've reached for base salary with Dr. Chang is $257,000. And over that five-year term, the opportunity for annualized increases will be based on performance. And so, the way that we'll measure performance is via the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education's superintendent evaluation structure. So as a school committee, we are required on a yearly basis to evaluate our superintendent in the, throughout the year and culminating in the September timeframe. And so, we'll use the four categories that are provided through the superintendent evaluation as guideposts for compensation in order to determine Dr. Chang's annual increase. And so, we've pegged the increases to 2% for a proficient performance and 3% to 4% at the school committee's consideration and discretion for an exemplary performance. And just to give you some scope there, proficient is Level 3, which is the second-highest performance that you can receive as a superintendent, and exemplary is Level 4, which is the top performance that a superintendent can receive. There will be no increase for performance that is unsatisfactory or at the needs improvement level, which are 1 and 2 respectively. Just a few other things to note. Dr. Chang, as, you know, many of you have likely read in media reports, has been exceedingly humble, I think is the word he's used in his approach here towards contract negotiations. And certainly, when we take benefits into account, I think that certainly bears itself out. He's repeatedly noted to me that he wants the same benefits that are provided to all other BPS managers, and so that's what we've agreed to in this contract. We've also provided him with an automobile allowance of $500 a month, which is commensurate with what Dr. Johnson received in 2007, yet a little bit less to take into account the reduction in fuel prices that we're experiencing at the current time. And we're also going to provide him a suite of moving expenses, so a reimbursement for relocation expenses, again, commensurate with what we've offered to Dr. Johnson in her move from Tennessee in 2007, and Dr. Pezzanz's move from Washington, DC in 1995, as well as some transition assistance to aid his move into Boston and to aid him with his move of his family from the West Coast to Boston over time. And so, I think that's probably the extent of the substantive points of the agreement. I hope that's helpful. If there's any questions that I can answer for the committee now, I'd be happy to do so.
Sure. I'd like to open it up to questions and comments from the committee. Okay. I do want to comment, I appreciate the spirit that Dr. Chang brought to this. He said from day one, he wanted to be humble about it, and it was very intentional on his part that he did not have the experience of Dr. Johnson, and so his salary should not match Dr. Johnson's, starting off. And as Mr. LaCanto said, Dr. Johnson started at $275 plus a bonus, which she ultimately turned down over several years. And then, when the budget issues started to hit a couple of years ago, her contract was renegotiated at her request to lower to $267,500. And so, Dr. Chang's, Dr. Chang's base salary of $257 is both below what Dr. Johnson's salary was, commensurate with that he was not a sitting superintendent of several districts as Dr. Johnson was. But it's also his acknowledgement of the budget issues that the city is facing right now. And so, we appreciate that he has taken, in his words, a verbal humble approach to this. He has also not, after discussion, he wanted his benefits to be exactly equal with other senior managers, other than the transition assistance and the moving help, which has been typical for our last superintendents. So, and the automobile allowance, because as many of you know, the superintendent is on the road all the time, and the city has moved away from fleet cars for senior staff, and so an automobile allowance makes more sense, as was offered to Dr. Johnson in her initial contract. So I certainly think this is fiscally prudent. It is something, members of the committee have helped with this, and I thank the members for their help on that, and I thank Mr. LaCanto for taking the lead on this. And so, I'd like to open it up. If there are any other questions or comments? Hearing now on entertain a motion to approve Dr. Chang's employment agreement as presented.
So moved.
Thank you, Dean Coleman, a second from Dr. Uriarte. Any discussion of objection to the motion? Hearing now, Ms. Sullivan, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. LaCanto?
Yes.
Ms. Jerry Robinson?
Yes.
Ms. Regina Robinson?
Yes.
Dr. Uriarte?
Yes.
Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neil?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. And we welcome Dr. Chang to the district. This agreement now has to be formalized. It has to be signed by Dr. Chang and myself. As I mentioned before, the city auditor's, the city's corporate council has to sign it, and then the mayor has to sign it. And once all parties have signed it, it will be a public document, and we'll release it. We will put it on our webpage, as we have done with all the other search committee documents to date. And once we have that signed agreement, and Dr. Chang officially starts July 1, but once we have that signed agreement, I will be able to formally thank members of the search committee who worked so hard on it, on this effort, and I see at least one here today, Ms. Perrell, as well as Dean Coleman and Mr. Gallery, who co-chaired it. And I was going to say next, there were two other school committee members who were on it. I was talking first about folks who are sitting in the office, in the audience, but this has been a very long process, and we are delighted to welcome Dr. Chang aboard, and we certainly appreciate. I know he is already speaking very closely to Mr. McDonough and his senior team, and I know as we have been a model for the open inclusive process on this, I think we will also be a model for a transition here. I have no doubt that Mr. McDonough will work extremely closely with Dr. Chang, and he will have the ability to hit the ground running on July 1, and we look forward to that. So thank you, everybody, for their work on that behalf. Move on, we'll move on now to our first report for the evening. I mentioned at the budget hearing on Wednesday night that as part of the, excuse me, the budget hearing on Monday night, that as part of the district's budget proposal, one of the subsets was about middle school transportation. And when we voted last year as a policy item, when we voted as a policy item for seventh graders to be, seventh and eighth graders to be on the MBTA, we left it up to the district to decide how to implement. And the district decided, folks who are going to present could make their way up as I make some opening comments, if that's okay. And one of our, one of our requests that was suggested to us by community members was that there be a working group on this issue, and that they really dig in on the details of this. The last year, the district decided to phase in the implementation, eighth graders last year, and then as it gets rolled out, have an intensive community effort to look at what is going on with this. And so, I specifically asked, there has been this middle school transportation group that has been very actively working since last year. A number of the members are here this evening. Mr. Ron Dorsey, Mayor Walsh's chief of education, has been coordinating the effort. I would hesitate to say you've been leading it, Mr. Dorsey, but you would, it's been an excellent group effort. I did have the ability, the opportunity to sit in with the group last night to hear some of their thoughts, but I did ask them to present to us so we could understand how that process is going to help enlighten the superintendent's recommendation with that regard. So at this point, may I turn it over to you, superintendent, and then you can.
I will turn it over to you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chair, and good evening, members of school committee and Boston's education community. It's a pleasure to be here this evening with a select group of the members of the Middle School Transportation Advisory Committee. We want to provide you with a presentation on the assessment of mid-year performance and recommendations for maintaining program quality and making program improvements to the middle school transportation program. I don't know if we have slides available or not, or if they're being projected.
Is, is there someone who could, is it, are the slides in that computer? And if so, is the... Thank you, Dr. Wilson. You're learning now, and chief of staff, that it's a...[1261.15][1261.15](Laughter). Be careful what you wish for, sir. There's, you have to wear many different hats. Thank you, Ms. Sullivan, as well.
Sure. So just a couple of comments while the slides come on. First of all, this has been a very thoughtful and collaborative process, and so I want to thank, really, the Middle School Transportation Advisory Committee group for welcoming me into the group, because the group was established before my entry into city government, and it's been a very productive process. I also want to thank Elizabeth O'Brien in the education cabinet for helping us get organized and synthesize a lot of information. So the presentation will catch up to us, but I think I can give you a little bit of an overview of what you'll hear without the benefit of the slides. So our intent tonight is really to provide you with a balanced assessment of program performance tonight, and so you will hear about a lot of dimensions of the program in its first year of implementation, including data that we have regarding attendance, absence, tardiness, student safety data, as well as feedback, though limited, that we've been able to get from students, parents, and school leaders who are participating in the implementation. So first, you will hear from me a little bit of a framing about our work and what we've done. I will then hand it over to Kim Rice, who is the chief of operations for the district, to take you through an outline of the implementation and what has really been a multi-agency coordination of this program. And I would say it's agreement among the committee, impressively so, that it's been well-coordinated across a number of agencies. She will take you through the quantitative data that we have as well. Mark Gillespie and Tom Sexton, Mark Gillespie representing Stopwatch, and Tom Sexton representing BPD, will take you through what we know of some of the student safety data and law enforcement data, and also raise some of the challenges we've found in the ability of law enforcement to connect some of the data that we need about student safety through conventional means. Nia Evans from the NAACP will take us through some of the feedback that we've gotten from students and parents as well. And I will close with recommendations and kind of where this group has landed as you consider the second year of implementation. You can't see the charge that I'm going to reference, but let me just real quickly note for you that our charge, and if we can go to slide three, when that's available, has been to identify and review program performance, monitor and provide feedback on the middle school transportation implementation, identify student transportation safety standards to guide current program performance, highlight the conditions that will be favorable for further expansion, and develop recommendations for this body as you consider expansion going forward. I want to note that we've been working most consistently from November through the present to do the work of developing a monitoring method, understanding performance and challenges, and to develop recommendations. An incredibly diverse body of folks on this team, representing the operational team of BPS, transit police, MBTA, and BPD. We are also joined by several community organizations who have really been a part of this from the beginning, I think, both helping us to critically look at the policy itself and to understand and help us problem-solve on some of the challenges in the first year of implementation. So with that said, I'm going to ask Kim Rice to give us an overview of the policy and the program, just as a reminder for the audience, and then to take us through implementation and some of the data that we've collected.
Want to swap?
Yeah.
We'll play a little musical chairs here. So the idea of this program came about last year in discussions with a number of our principals that were already making requests to and had students in the middle grades that were riding the MBTA. So that coupled with the budget challenges, we thought that this might be a logical expansion. And so, the statistics that we had here was really a proposal to put about 4,600 seventh and eighth graders onto the MBTA for this year. And with that, that was part of a larger strategy to reduce the transportation budget by about $11 million. The seventh and eighth grader portion of that was approximately $8 million. So the actual program, just again to review, as Ron mentioned, it was to provide a free seven-day MBTA pass for eligible students. And so, eligible students in this scenario were students that live a mile and a half or further away from school. And that's really important to note, because we had a lot of students that want to participate and would love to have an MBTA pass that fall within that one and a half mile. And so, we continue to try and clarify that this is, this is kind of a replacement for the students that are eligible for yellow school bus. This also does not impact our door-to-door students and students with special needs that require specialized transportation. So they still have yellow buses all the way up through high school. So while this is an expansion, it leaves their transportation in place. It also allows for students to opt out of transportation for a number of different, either personal reasons or distance reasons. So we created a safety waiver. There was a waiver if students lived more, or if the commute provided more than an hour or three or more stops that we allowed if there was a sibling that was on the bus. So there were a number of opportunities for families to be able to apply for waivers as part of that. And so, as we look back, we are now six months into the program. I can't believe we're already six months into the school year. It has absolutely flown by. I really kind of broken down the year into, or I should say, our success of this implementation into three main categories, all of which really highlight the inter-agency coordination between the city entities. So we talk about coordination and communication. I get daily texts and send daily texts on attendance and service issues, on potential outages, on questions and concerns about varying stations, and that really allows us to react in real time. The second is, we've had religiously every Friday an operations conference call. Sometimes that call is five minutes. Things are going well. Other times, it's an hour, as we're trying to address potential areas. And we're talking about volume, we're looking at ridership, we're talking about the MBTA stations, we're shifting our program to actually ride buses and ride trains with students, and see about how can we be looking at improvements overall. So that Friday call is a review of the week, and it's planning for that next week, which, again, I think really allows for us to do a lot, and I attribute it to one of the biggest success pieces in this program. And then we do quarterly check-ins, which is just a little bit more broader, it's looking at policy, it's allowing for us to report up to folks like the superintendent and others around how are things going. The middle school task force has been a great base for a lot of questions and data, as we've included in that. And then we've continued to have our safety ambassadors and stopwatch program, which are kind of our eyes and ears out on the street throughout this program. The student support piece, I also think, has been really key. So that first section is the mechanism in which we've been able to do the second piece. So it's been about a positive adult presence in stations and on buses. We've, in one of the recommendations you'll see, it's not only just about adults being present, it's about a face that the students know, so that consistency in the varying areas, and knowing the students has made a real difference as we kicked off the year. As I mentioned, we talked in the beginning about just being available at stops and stations. As I mentioned, we talked in the beginning about just being available at stops and stations, and this evolved to actually riding buses and riding trains with youngsters, and talking about what does it mean to be a citizen riding the MBTA. We've developed a handbook that we did. We're evolving that from what we gave out in the spring for professional development. We're going to do another safari, which is going to allow for students to get out and into the city and take pictures of themselves doing certain things around the city to provoke positive ridership. And I'm assuming that Mark will mention something about the mediation program that the MBTA Transit has done, which, again, has really been around positive interactions. So you're—you're—one of the concerns we had was about jumping the fairs and that students were going to be stopped at the gates and that they weren't going to be able to get to school, or that there's going to be disruptive interactions with adults because students couldn't get to school or they didn't have their pass. The work that they have done with Stop Watch and the MBTA has really been incredibly impressive, you know, to some—in some areas where they open gates and they're moving kids through to really working with students to make sure that if there's an issue that continues to rear its head over time, that it really is about mediating. It's not about kind of that negative police interaction. And then finally, we have been doing service adjustments. We've been looking at our ridership of yellow bus shuttles. While we've not eliminated any, and I think when we were talking about it, and we continue to talk about it, we've got some of our yellow bus shuttles that have very, very light ridership. But that was going into the winter, and we didn't know what the winter or the different temperatures or the different times of day, daylight savings, night dark, we just weren't sure what it was going to look like. So we really are using this year as that baseline. And so even though there's a shuttle to the Lula Frederick, and there's another one, a few others that have only a few kids that are riding it, and they opt for the MBTA buses, we're really trying to track that ridership, and we've left that alone. The MBTA did add a train at the JFK station on the red line just for kids. So it's—the—that train really just commutes—now granted, commuters are allowed on it, too—but it was just to recognize the volume of students that were going. So they have made adjustments for us throughout this process. And we've been looking at routes and extensions, again, not around for student transit, but to look at the overall capacity. So that has been a phenomenal coordination of agencies and that this, I think, program has really been—has really needed in order to be successful. So in moving on to the next slide, we—with the advisory committee, we've developed and we're continuing to refine, how do we want to look at data over time? This hasn't been easy, as Ron mentioned, but we've been looking at program participation, which I'm going to walk you through a little bit. Student attendance, absence, and tardiness, which has been a little bit challenging in our shift to a new student information system, but we're continuing to work that through. Student safety, which we've done quite a bit with, and then program cost and savings. And then Nia's going to go through the—some of the sample student feedback that we've gotten from the community. So the next couple of slides are a lot of data, and so I'll walk through what you're looking at, and then I'll be available to answer questions throughout this. So this first slide really references the participation, so the number of students by grade. I will note, 6th graders are—do not have to participate. We've included them just for a point of information. We do have a number of schools that have adopted the MBTA as the mechanism for transportation, which is where these numbers come from, but they also are—they can opt out of the program. So in terms of corner buses, if you look along the top, it's got 6th, 7th, 8th grade, and then the school year. We've broken down the corner bus, the MBTA, and the overall totals. So it's listed by the percentage at the top, that's that larger number, and then the number in the parentheses is the total number. And that was really important for us as we thought about differentiating, because some of our numbers now, especially as you look at the big shift in 8th grade, you know, we went last year from 53% of our students overall to now 6% of our 8th graders that are riding the MBTA. So as we look at some of the comparisons of attendance and tardiness, there's large numbers of shifts in the overall population. As we look at the waivers, you also note that the numbers really haven't changed in September, after the—after December, excuse me. We didn't receive any additional waivers for opting in or opting out after December to report for folks. So breaking down the participation numbers on Slide 9, we did—we are breaking out 8th grade and 7th grade. And the rationale for including 7th grade not only is because we are talking about whether to expand to 7th grade, but if you'll note on that slide, on the participation number, we currently have 49% of our 7th graders that are riding the T. So when we think about expanding, we're not talking about all of them, because half of them are already riding. So we break out all students, MBT riders, walkers, and yellow bus riders. These are our corner students. These are not door-to-door students when we are reporting on these numbers, so that we have a little bit more of an apples-to-apples comparison here. I will note that there are door-to-door students on these yellow buses, but the numbers reported here is based on student attendance and student absence and days overall. So I think that while the performance of the buses of note, the report is on the students, whether they're in school or not. So the message here is pretty good, as we look at overall attendance, with the overall student attendance rate having risen from last year, and the MBTA has a—has an attendance rate that is higher than the other—the other categories. And I think as we talk about looking at our reporting, and we've sliced and diced this in many different ways, and we will be providing this publicly in terms of the data, comparing it from this year to last year. The data that we have from last year right now is a full year of data, whereas right now, we're looking at a half year of data. So we thought it was more relevant to look at the modes of transportation and comparing the modes to each other, rather than comparing performance from this year to last, because we really are looking at, is there a big impact? Is there a difference between students that are riding the yellow bus versus students that are riding the MBTA? So in this instance, where we're looking at attendance rates, it's—if I'm channeling Kamal, this is not statistically significant, but the MBTA numbers are just a little bit higher. Flipping to the tardy data, it's an area that we are watching overall. Again, this is average number of days tardy, and we are looking at, again, additional ways to slice and dice this data. But of all students, the average number is 6.6 days tardy. Our MBTA riders is just as—slightly higher, at seven days tardy. Our walkers are at 6.4, and our yellow bus riders are 4.9. So the difference between 7.0 and 4.9 is slightly statistically significant, and so we are looking at, what does that look like? Are these combo kids? And what I mean by combo kid is, we've got students that, as you know, we are providing an MBTA pass, but for that last part of the ride, they get a yellow bus shuttle. So a yellow bus picks them up at the station, and then they can continue the ride on through. And so that's an area where we've been really working, again, with our ambassadors and with MBTA Transit to help move students out of the stations once they get there and either onto yellow bus or onto MBTA buses to make sure that they get to school on time. So that's an area that we are looking at. We have also broken out and will be making available the data for the month of February, specifically given the amount of snow that we've had. And what we found with that was that—the students that rode the MBTA, they did have a higher tardy rate, not necessarily compared to walkers, but the interesting piece to that was that our yellow bus riders were statistically more absent on snow days than our T-pass riders. And so, again, I think the point there, as we look at the data, which I think, once you dig into it, makes sense, the yellow bus, you had one shot at it, and if you weren't sure when it was coming and you potentially missed it, you had to have another ride to school, or you weren't coming to school. Whereas on the MBTA, again, while we were all slowed and burdened by the storm, you had multiple potential opportunities to be able to get to school. So that—those numbers made sense. So we will make sure that we make that data available as we look at the overall in the final report. So moving on to program cost and savings, when we did make the shift and we cut from 7th and 8th graders riding the MBTA to just 8th graders riding the MBTA, we cut our projected savings from $8 million to $2 million. And some people wanted to know, why isn't that—why didn't we cut that number in half? There were two main reasons for that. One was because we no longer had a critical mass in the middle schools to really look at the overall reduction of buses. But the second was, we did not have the data, again, given the lateness of time, to change our shuttle program for the MBTA, to stay with all confidence that we weren't going to be potentially jeopardizing that program, too. So we left the MBTA program that we'd put into place with the shuttles kind of in full, and then on top of that, we routed the 7th graders back on the yellow bus, which then made our efficiencies less. So that's where we projected about a $2 million savings for that line item instead of the eight. We are holding true to that right now. We are tracking that it will be about a $2 million savings by the end of the year. And the number of buses reduced, that's a shift to what we're looking at potentially going forward. Our overall reduction for this year was we reduced 12 buses. That was not just attributed to the MBTA 7th grade. We did have a number of other shifts that we talked about in terms of the GEO code eligibility and changing some school start times that we'll be referencing in the budget report later, but our overall reduction was 12 buses. Had we not done the program, we would have been looking at it at other kinds of bus additions. And then we look at the number of yellow bus riders, that's the participation numbers. And route efficiency is a number that we hope to be sharing with you a lot more going forward. One challenge that I know I've had in working with transportation over the last few years is really trying to determine the value. It's the value of when you look at an empty bus versus the value of a full bus, and then how far is that ride? How long is that bus on the road? So there are a lot of these factors that we are now trying to build into what we're calling an efficiency rating. And so we'll get into that in more detail, and I'm happy to answer questions. But given that we did root the 7th graders after we had done the initial rooting and we had the shuttle program, we weren't running as tight as we had hoped to, should we do it all when we do the overall planning. So we're, again, tracking to where we thought we were from last year when we reported the overall savings. Finally, in terms of my piece, and again, I'm not going anywhere, so we'll be able to answer questions. As we think about this year, transportation is looking to cut $9.5 million overall, of which that will bring back the $6 million of savings by moving the 7th graders. So again, where some people say, well, gosh, if 50% are already riding the T, Kim, how are you looking at a $6 million number? Again, it's—it—right now, they're double-counted. We haven't reduced shuttles. We hadn't moved a lot of things around in order to do that. And so we believe that by rooting efficiently and by actually moving the kids, that we're looking at that number. And then the $2 million is in, again, the budget presentation around looking at RSVPs, reduced waiver cost efficiencies, and overall insurance of the fleet. So we'll be able to report more on that as you may have questions later on.
Really quickly, I'd like to invite Mark Gillespie and Tom Sexton up to talk to us about student safety results and the data that go along with that, and also to help us understand, again, some of the challenges that we've had monitoring student safety in the way that we'd like to.
It's a pleasure to be here, and it was an honor to serve on this committee with all the individuals that did participate. It's been very interesting. I'm currently a Sergeant Detective assigned to the Boston Police School Unit. It's a unit that's been in existence for over 18 years. Police Commissioner Evans is very much dedicated to student safety, to and from school. It's been at the forefront of the Police Department for many years, so that continues today. The dedication that we have had to this initiative is just—it goes along with what we've been doing for many years. In particular, the 8th graders this year, I've been tasked with try to—trying to identify any incidents that we can of any 8th grade students in particular that are now traveling to and from school by this new system on the MBTA, where they've been either victimized or had issues or concerns where they file police reports. I'm happy to report that I have not been able to come up with any information. I have—our intelligence unit has looked at it many different ways, and we just—I've reported back to the committee for months now that we just don't have any data to support any incidents that we can report. So that is—that's good news from our perspective. The commitment that the Boston Police has to Operation Stop Watch, which I'll let Lieutenant Gillespie from the MBTA Police comment more on, is—it's an ongoing public safety issue anyways. We are committed to—the school police unit is out there on a daily basis. When we see or have issues concerning this 8th grade transportation issue over the last eight months or so, the commitment from the Police Department is we've utilized quite heavily the bicycle patrol unit. So we have officers on bicycles that are in the areas, particularly over in Dorchester, Columbia Point, with the Devon McCorma kids that have a big, long walk, and it's—it's —they interact with the kids as they're coming and going, as we do on Operation Stop Watch. So it's been very, very good as far as a public safety aspect, this program. We don't have anything to really report on any 8th grade students that have been involved in any incidents that have been brought to our attention. So we'll continue to commit our resources to make sure that all the students, whether they be on a yellow school bus, whether they be a walker, or if they're on the MBTA, we're going to do whatever we can to keep them safe.
Thank you. I echo Tom's words of my appreciation who has served on the board with Ron and to make this presentation tonight to the Boston School Committee. And I have a few words to say about the MBTA and the youth that we serve. A primary concern is to provide—has been in my position as Commander of the Investigative Services for the MBTA Transit Police, as well as the conduit for all youth services, is to provide for the safety and well-being of all children from all communities and all counties throughout Massachusetts. The crux of the ridership on the MBTA is mostly the Boston Public School children. We have many students that use the T. It's upwards of 35,000 trips per day, one-way trips, so it's close to 70,000 trips per day of the students currently using the MBTA. The incidents that we have that involve any type of crime or disorder requiring police action doesn't focus around 7th and 8th graders. It seems to go with the adolescent development of children. 7th and 8th graders haven't hit the stage where they—the stage in adolescent development where they use criminal acts or act in a criminal intent. It seems like it's mostly just developmental-type incidents that we're involved in when we deal with 7th and 8th grade students. The number of incidents is very, very low. The arrests are very minimal for 7th and 8th grade students. We have a program called Stop Watch. It's nothing new to the MBTA Police. It's a—it's a program that's not owned by the MBTA. There are several stakeholders in it, including BCYF, the Boston Center for Youth and Family, Suffolk Juvenile Probation, the Boston School Police themselves, the Boston Police with Tom Sexton as the head, and school officials and administrators meet us each day at a meeting similar to this, but out in the field. The point of the Stop Watch is the reduction of anonymity. We find that the anonymous offender is our target, is the person that causes the most problems. And we haven't found the 7th and 8th graders in this category. As adolescent develops and we run into the 14, 15, and 16-year-olds, we seem to have that element of interaction with students that may develop into some type of court or someone's act, someone's type of action. With the 7th and 8th graders, we revert to—we try to—a main concern is to protect their queries and to do some type of mediation or some type of empathy with the children to understand and to provide some type of guidance to them. We have had training to help us along with the adolescent development with Dr. Jeff Bostick from the Mass General Hospital, who is the chief over there, and he's given us lectures each year on the development of the adolescent brain. It's an amazing thing. It helps us not only as police officers, but at home as well, to understand—
(Laughter).
—what it is. It helps us not only as police officers, but at home as well, to understand what it's like to be a 15-year-old. I don't think I've ever had a truthful word out of my three children at 15 years old. It's very difficult. It's a very specialized core group of people that you need to deal with the young ones, with the seventh and eighth graders. You need people that have a lot of empathy, a lot of understanding, and a lot of, a lot of concern to understand that it doesn't stop just at the T station. The key of the Stop Watch program is the intense networking that we do. We network, Tom and I have become very good friends over this program, and we're on telephone speed dials. We talk every day, Kim, Ron, the entire crew is talking every day. We know what's going on. We know how to put the fires out. We know who the seventh graders are. We know what their needs are. We know what their concerns are. And we know that the impact of this group of seventh and eighth graders on the T is minimal to nothing. There's no impact of adding this ridership. The key is for us to provide safety for these students. We have an immense number of cameras, and we have the one card Charlie ticket where we see what's going on real time. We get into things quickly. We're able to find lost children. If something does happen, we look at the cameras, we look at the Charlie tickets, we know what's happening, who was with who. We're able to talk directly with parents, teachers, police, school police, and any other advocacy groups involved. We have the Boston Center for Youth and Family that had called me just coincidentally yesterday. They're putting a team on the MBTA just for the schools, just for the schools and for this transition coming up. So it's, we feel that it's been a very positive thing. The interactions are tremendous. We provide for consistency, and we've persevered. An example is at the JFK station, we see the same kids every day. They're comfortable, they're slapping us five, they're high-firing us, they feel good with us. One young man had a little knife on him. I told him to give me the knife. He didn't want to give me the knife. He refused, he refused, he refused. We took the knife from him because we told him, if you don't give us the knife, we're going to take you home, we're going to have to bring you to the police station and have your mother and father come to the police station. So we took the knife from him begrudgingly, he gave it. And to show the success of the program, the trust that the students have in the police that work this program, when the train got to Ashburn Station, this young little kid came up to me, and he goes, "I'm sorry for being a jerk." And that was because of the peer pressure from the other students that were on that train that forced this child to conform. So it was very interesting that we have this one train for other students at the Devon McCormick School, and because of the snow that we've had lately, for two weeks, we weren't able to provide this special train that we ride and we talk and we watch and we observe, and we kind of know what's going on with the kids, what they're thinking, what their talk is, how they act. It's a great exercise to learn about adolescents. And because of the snow, the train had to stop, and the students had to mix in back with the regular riding public coming home from work or school or wherever they were coming from. And the difference was, in September, we were getting two or three letters to the MBTA complaining about adolescent behavior. And it was bothersome so much so that we dug in deep, we got on the trains, we provided for a special train. The letters stopped, not one letter since we got on the trains. When the snow came and the students weren't able to get back onto that special train, they rode the regular train, their behavior was an incredible difference from the beginning of the year. They interacted well, there were no complaints for the two-week period at all that the students rode the train. So I felt that they just, through consistency, through us being there, the same people all the time, this core group of offices and school officials and other advocates working together has provided the consistency to make these students feel safe. And I believe that at this one school that we really targeted hard, although we put out a newsletter each week that is very contemporaneous to what's going on on the MBTA, and we invite up to 350 different people involved in the Stop Watch group to come to the Stop Watch meeting the following week, to put out the fires, to reduce the anonymity, and to get things back on track. And it's worked very well, providing for this type of coverage for incidents that occur, not only at the JFK, but anywhere, whether it be in Brighton, whether it be at Forest Hills. Forest Hills was very difficult for us for many, many years. It's not now, and I'm sure people in this committee go through Forest Hills. There's a lot of kids there, and you have to accept adolescent behavior as normal. Bouncing a basketball might upset an adult, but it's something a kid is going to do, and everybody on that board has done it. But the perception of an adult seeing a basketball being bounced when they're reading the newspaper can be upsetting. But it's, the officers need to be trained too, that they don't overreact, and that this is just an adolescent action that's going on, and we have to relax. The officers need to relax and to have the training that we provide so that they can service these children the best way that we can. So in ending, I just feel very confident in listening to everybody that we've worked with for almost a year now that I've been connected with this committee. And I feel very confident that this program will work if it sets off next year. It's not a lot of students, we can handle them very easily. It's just a safety is our number-one concern that we all care, and is paramount to making this work. And that's what I have to say tonight. Thank you very much.
So I'm going to ask Nia Evans to join me. A couple of comments about the safety data. One of the challenges that we continue to face is how we capture things that don't rise to the level of school disciplinary action and things that don't rise to the level of arrest or summons. We were hearing from other parts of the community, including community members, that there may be some things that we were missing. And actually, Tom Sexton has asked, "Let's figure out the list of anecdotal stuff so that we can then compare it to arrest record and summons record and see where we're missing this." And so we're in the process of still getting that. But what we wanted to do was get the help of our youth-serving organizations serving on the committee and ask them to talk to young people, ask them to talk to parents so that we could see what we were missing. And Nia is going to give you a summary of that information.
Good evening. I don't speak publicly very often, so please forgive me if my introduction is not complete. But I'd like to thank Superintendent McDonough and the school committee for its responsiveness to the concerns that we raised in last year's budget process and that we continue to raise this year, as well as Kim, Ron, Mark, Tom, and, who am I forgetting? Mary Driscoll, and the community organizations that participated during this process. I am speaking on behalf of not just the Boston NAACP, but also Black Educators Alliance of Massachusetts, BYOP, Boston Youth Organizing Project, Youth On Board, Lawyers Committee for Civil Rights and Economic Justice, and Project Right. Okay, so...
She's a bad woman.
Excuse me, Ms. Evans. A number of representatives from those organizations are also on this task force.
Yes.
Yes, absolutely, yes. So as Ron stated, one of the issues that we raised at the, last year, at the beginning of this process was student and parent feedback. So that was something that we wanted to make sure was present as we were looking at the data from this year. So we did a couple of things. The community organizations that participated on the task force collaborated on a survey, an online survey that was distributed throughout Facebook, email, some hard copies of the survey were distributed as well. We received 90 responses, and I see that the slide is, I think it should be Slide 13. We received 90 responses, and this isn't listed on the slide, so I'll state that, of those 90 responses, 35 were parents, 34 were students, all at the Lila Frederick School, nine were community members, and two described themselves as other. And as you can see from the summary, it doesn't tell you much. So it looks about half and half said, you know, "We think the program is great," "We think the program is not so great." Of course, there's a, it's a small number of people. So this is, this is really, I think, gives us an indication of what we might see when, if we have the ability to survey a larger number of people. And I don't know if you would like me to read out loud what's on the slide? Or should I continue? Okay.
Whichever comments you wish to make.
Those are the only comments I have to make on this. The second thing that we did, and Matt McCrager, or, I'm sorry, Matt Crager at Lawyers Committee for Civil Rights and Economic Justice, conducted a focus group with a group of students at McCormick Middle School. There were about 20 students in this class, about half of them were boys, half were girls. So I think the conversation that this group of students had was interesting. As you see here, many of the students enjoyed the freedom of riding the T. They appreciated not having to ride the yellow bus, although I think, according to my notes, with the snowstorms, the yellow bus was a little more appreciated than the T amongst the students. At the same time, there were some issues. So there were some young students who had said, or some new students who said that they had been jumped on the T. There were some students who felt that the police were harassing them or yelling at them or being less than gentle with them. There were students who felt like some adults were interacting negatively with them. And one of the things that was a flag for us was, every single girl in the focus group said that they had been harassed by an older adult on the train. So this, as I said, was definitely a flag for us. It's something that we talked about at our meeting yesterday. And again, small group of students, 20 students, but there is the question of how many more young women will report having been harassed? Should we, should we survey 4,000 students, 1,000 students, or even 4,000 students? So I think that that's definitely something that the group should look at. This also raises the issue, so Ron talked about incidents that don't rise to the level of disciplinary procedure or arrest. And this, for us, brings us to the attention of issues, not only that may not rise to the level of arrest or disciplinary procedure, but may not rise to the level of reporting period. So, and again, I think we had a very good discussion about this, that I would like to be a public discussion in terms of what is considered a normal environmental condition for students of a certain age. So we know, for example, harassment is a societal condition that we all deal with. So students, you know, women, girls, women, boys, men, of all ages, will be, will be dealing with it at some point in time. But should we have concerns that we have young women who may be experiencing this behavior and not reporting it unless there's a, unless there's a conversation that is had with a trusted adult? And what I'll say is, the focus group that Matt conducted was with an award-winning teacher at McCormick Middle School. So I think that also just speaks to how the relationship of the teacher and the students was able to get this information that was not previously available in any other survey or any other focus group that had been conducted to this point. So I think, I think it's disturbing that students may be experiencing this and not reporting it or feeling the need to report it, because it may be considered just something that goes along with, with daily living. That led us to a discussion about what the scope of BPS's responsibility is when it comes to neighborhood issues versus school issues. And I thought that that was also an interesting discussion, and I think should be a public discussion as well. And if, and if it's okay, I'll quote Michael O'Neill, if that's okay.
Please do.
Who said, you know, maybe we...
If you didn't say it, I will, so please do.
Who said, "Maybe we own the fact that these students are hours from home to home." And in recognition of the fact that what may seem to be a neighborhood issue, because this was something that was coming up a lot in the conversation, cannot be siloed or looked at as only a neighborhood issue. What happens in our neighborhoods definitely impacts what happens in our schools. And I think, I just think this would be an interesting discussion, to see how, to see how BPS can incorporate that scope of responsibility into its mission moving forward. And on that note, I will echo what Ron and Kim, Mark and Tom have said about the inter-agency coordination that has taken place. Because to me, that also goes hand in hand, understanding that our schools and our neighborhoods are communities, and that they are not, they are not distinct, they are separate. So city agencies, BPS, families, community partners, all share responsibility to ensure safe, safe passage throughout communities for our young people. The last thing that I will talk about, and this is related a little bit, again, to the focus group work and the, and the survey work, is that for us, there's still some data that is, that is missing. So of course, some of this data, as I said, is the stuff that doesn't rise to the level of reporting, that doesn't rise to the level of disciplinary procedure by the BPS police or MBTA police or school officials. Kim talked about some of the difficulties with comparing what's happened with the full year, with what's happened with the half year. So we're waiting on some month-by-month data to see, to see what that looks like. There's some data that we would like to see disaggregated by race and by ELL, to see the impact on different groups, to see if it's disparate. I'm trying to think if there's anything that I've forgotten. And, and again, the emphasis on really getting as much student feedback and as much parent feedback as possible. We definitely feel we did not have enough of that throughout this process, so also thinking about how we ensure massive parent and student feedback going forward, as well as complete parent or family notification going forward about the program. Thanks.
So I'm going to kind of glide through some of the school leader response as well, because we wanted to hear what they had to say, and they echoed many things that we've heard from parents and students as well. By and large, school leaders, we reached out to 32 schools participating in the program. We got responses from 16 leaders. By and large, they report successful implementation. MBTA rider attendance and tardiness don't seem to be different from riders of other modes of transportation. They've had, they report having fewer transportation-related disciplinary issues, and some report that dismissal management has been a little bit easier as well. But they also express a series of concerns. And so, one, they notice that students that have to make connections to forms of transportation, train to shuttle, train to bus, have more difficulty getting to school on time. There's variability in student arrival. Some students are arriving too early before the school building is open, and some are arriving late. They're looking for some help on policy consistency, especially having to do with siblings. So if you've got a younger sibling who is still on yellow bus, they're wondering, can we keep that older sibling on yellow bus too and not have to separate siblings? We, in some neighborhoods, certainly not all, are hearing some complaints from local businesses, et cetera. And I will say about this, that, one, we want them to give us some reports on our students so that we can better monitor. But there's another piece of work to be done, referencing Nia's comment, where we've got to get whole community buy-in into securing the safety of our students. So these businesses have a role as well. And I want to deeply underscore that school leaders also said, "We hear the complaints from young ladies about the harassment that they receive on the T." And please know that the committee has taken this incredibly seriously, and it's one of the most, I think, concerning findings out of the qualitative information that we've been able to get. So where do we stand? I want to be real clear about our collective thinking. Members agree that many aspects of this program are working and may be working better than we thought that they might this time last year when it was proposed. But we do not have consensus on the readiness for full implementation of the program. And so we wanted to be honest and forthright about that. We do recognize that the policy vote that was taken last year was for seventh and eighth graders. The implementation decision that was made was for a phase-in of eighth graders. It really is still at the authority of this body to decide how implementation continues beyond the phase-in period, and for Superintendent McDonough and his team to execute according to your wishes. However you might proceed, there are a set of recommendations that we would like to make that have to do with five areas. Interagency coordination and training, student and public safety, communication with families and students, data collection and reporting, and program oversight. And I'll try to be as brief as possible about this. One of the recommendations that you have to hear, and maybe the one that you take most seriously upfront, is that if we don't secure, we need formal agreement across BPS, MBTA, Transit Police, and BPD to maintain the same deployment and level of effort that we've dedicated to this. You've heard a lot about the interagency coordination and the depth of working together. If we do not continue this and have a sign-off at the highest levels of authority, we do not have the same program. And I do not think that we can, and the committee shares this, we cannot guarantee, I think, the same level of success that we've seen... I think, the same level of success that we've seen so far. Uh, we need to institute interagency training, uh, for staff deployed from the classroom, uh, to the platform and beyond, as Chairperson O'Neill said, to home. So there is a primary responsibility that our operating partners, uh, in schools, transit and BPD, uh, have for the execution of this. But we know that a lot of, uh, school personnel are involved in this. They need to be trained along with this, and a set of community partners need to be trained as well, so that there is clear understanding of the BPS code of conduct, so that there is common practice around student interaction, uh, and that we are providing young people with the best experience possible. We also need these professionals directly interacting with young people and getting direct feedback about the responsibility as well. So this goes beyond the training to hearing directly from students about how they are experiencing the program and being able to make program corrections on that basis. Uh, and again, we need to be deploying the same faces, the same adults, so that the relationships build over time, because trust is really, I think, the currency of the success, uh, of the program. Uh, where safety is concerned, we need to build a stronger culture of safety in BPS and with program and community partners. Uh, we recommend, uh, that we establish a definition of safety in transportation safety standards to guide, uh, the middle school transportation implementation and future initiatives. This is something that the committee is dedicated to working on, on an ongoing basis along with BPS staff. Uh, I've already mentioned the work that we need to do with partners, which is our fourth recommendation, and so I won't belabor that point. Uh, as far as improved communication with families, uh, a few things here. One, we need to provide families with the information on program, uh, on the program and on program options well in advance of expanding program implementation. Uh, the committee felt that it is perhaps the case that families were not given enough time to decide whether they wanted to execute a waiver, uh, or not. And we need to let, uh, families, uh, have that time. And there also needs to be, uh, a shared understanding, um, uh, of how this impacts the assignment process, um, and, uh, what the recourse of families are as they consider transportation and school choice. Uh, we need to establish a program of resource contact, phone and online, for program complaints, feedback, and participant help. One of the things that we heard consistently from students in particular was that if something happened, they did not know who to call. They didn't know who to contact. Of course, they knew who the adults were in the school or who they were on the platform and could go there, but beyond that, there did not seem to be common knowledge of a resource. Uh, we need to provide families and students with opportunities to acclimate to the MBTA per some of the work that schools like Orchard Gardens have done. Uh, I think a safari was referenced, uh, to get out into the city and learn to use the T. Uh, we need to call the practice from our schools that have done this well. Uh, data and, uh, increased feedback from students. You've heard already, more student voice, more, uh, parent feedback, and more school-level feedback. Uh, we also need to make sure that we refine the data template that we're using. We've already said to you, there are some data that we would still like, some data that we think are missing, and honestly, just some data that are hard to get, uh, and quantify, that we need to figure out some creative solutions on. And we need to make this data public. Uh, the committee feels that there needs to be an ongoing public conversation about the progress and performance, uh, of the, of the program. And then lastly, uh, and I apologize for the length of this, but you see, I think, both the thoughtfulness and the thoroughness, uh, of the committee. Uh, our recommendation is that, uh, we sanction a standing middle school, uh, transportation advisory group to do just the kind of monitoring work that we've been doing, uh, and to make recommendations for continuous improvement going forward. So we thank you for your time and your patience.
Thank you. Um, we're about to take a break to change the tape, but I would like, we have about two minutes before we do, and I'd like to flip the usual practice, which is that I would comment last, only because I sat in with this group yesterday, and I, and I'd like to comment about, uh, add a little, uh, more detail to Ms. Evans' comments in particular, because I was extremely impressed by the group, first of all, the, the working group, how closely you're all working together, um, the depth of experience that is at the table. And, um, several members are not here tonight, but, for example, when Mr. Martinez from Project Right, who actually had done the focus group that Ms. Evans referenced at the Lula Frederick, um, he was able to speak specifically about it and to have Lieutenant Gillespie and Sergeant Sexton then get immediately into the details about, you know, they're talking about this neighborhood, or, uh, we spent a considerable amount of time talking about what Mr. Martinez had uncovered, which was the female students who feel harassed. And that, is it safe to say, maybe was 30 to 40% of the conversation overall, concern about that and thinking about ways to, to deal with it. And to hear from Sergeant Sexton or Lieutenant Gillespie about, you know, this was an issue not necessarily, um, Frederick was where they were walking down the street to the right, but then, when they were actually getting off, I believe the concern was at the Fields Corner Station. And the initial reaction from B.C., some, from some BPS employees who were, who, what was brought to their attention was, well, that's a neighborhood issue, it's not a school issue. It wasn't from the school to where they first got on, but where it was getting off. And so we ended up having a long talk about that. And, um, you know, Sergeant Sexton and Lieutenant Gillespie were really had, able to add some details about the fact that, well, it feels corner, if you take a right, there's a community center there, and a number of teenagers congregate. And that's really when they dug in with these young women, that's where they were saying, well, when we, when we get off at Fields Corner and it's within one block. And so is that a neighborhood issue, is that a school issue? And, and that's where I was saying to Ms. Evans, that in my personal opinion, it's not opinion of the full committee, but in my personal opinion, we have to own our students from home to home, not from school to school. Right? We always have if we provide transportation. And we have to think in terms of safety and the lessons learned and that type of thing. And how do we get all of our employees, our teachers, our school leaders, et cetera, on board to have that mindset of, no, you don't say that's a neighborhood issue because it's at another start, but these are our students. And until they're home, how do we help with that? But also, Mr. Dorsey was saying, across discipline within the city, or across departments within the city, so the folks who run the, the community centers, and getting their employees to think about that, of how to speak up when they see things like this. Or getting our high school teachers to think about, because it was predominantly, I believe the feedback we were getting from Mr. Martinez, but it was, it was predominantly high school students that were making comments to the seventh and eighth grade females. And so how do we, how do we communicate to our students? I mean, there's a, there's a need here for a messaging around this. Right? That, that it's not right, and you have to stand up and speak up. And how do we get our, uh, high school students to buy into that? How do we get our high school leaders and teachers to message on that? How do we get our, our, um, community organizations and our nonprofits that are dealing with the after-school programs? This has to be a citywide effort to own this. And, and I, I personally found the recommendations of this group incredibly thoughtful, and, uh, and the conversation extremely worthwhile. So even as Mr. Dorsey said, there's not uniformity of opinion on the group about whether, um, the district should approve, the school committee should approve the superintendent's recommendation to implement this for the second half of eighth, the seventh graders who are not currently in it. I really appreciate the fact that as a group, you pushed beyond that and said, that's your body to decide, but if you do, here's some recommendations. And I thought they were very thoughtful. And Mr. Dorsey led with the one that we need a formal memo, memorandum of understanding on that. And I second that, because, um, Lieutenant Gillespie and, and all of the MBTA has been incredibly thoughtful on this. But we've had the support of Dr. Scott. And, you know, the public kind of beat her up about the smell. The boy from day one on this issue, she has owned it and put the MBTA's resources to bear for our students. And there will be a transition at the MBTA. So I think it is important that we get a memorandum of understanding, and make sure that the governor is aware of this, and as he appoints a new head of the MBTA, that the MBTA fully buys into it from the top down. And so I think the recommendations were very helpful to me, as I explained it. And now we're at the time that the cable office is focused, so I'd like to take a two-minute break, so we change the tape. I ask the members to stay here, please, and then I'll open it up to questions from members once we're finished.[1147.33]
Thank you. We apologize that took a little bit longer than I expected. Thank you for patiently waiting for all of us. I'd like to open it up to members for questions and comments. Ms. Robinson?
Thank you so much for the thoroughness of the report, and I know this has not been a very easy task for you in lots of ways. So I have a couple of questions and a couple of suggestions. One, I know you've said you've done focus groups with some of the youth. As you move forward, would you consider having an advisory group made up of them so that they could give regular feedback about how this is going for them? And the same thing about the community. I mean, I really agree that we need a major community awareness campaign with our churches, with all of our community folks, and also with just the other riders of the T to welcome kids on the buses. Our youth don't usually get a chance to, you know, for most of their lives, they're protected by our families, and then all of a sudden, we set them loose. And often, sometimes, they don't know how to do this, so that we need, they need a lot of help in getting this to happen right. And maybe there could be some kind of programming that really does teach them how to ride the T through school or doing more city exploration, those kinds of things as well. I was wondering, are there geographic differences about who's actually riding the buses? And from kids that were originally riding the yellow buses, is it longer for them or more difficult for them to get back and forth to school? So are they having to leave early? How is that impacting their overall length of school day?
So we are looking at the geographic differences. There are clearly areas that are more serviced by subways than buses, and then in areas where there's a lot of bus service at varying times of day. So we put together an entire grid by school in terms of proximity to subways, proximity to buses, and the number of bus routes. And we're trying to track that along with the correlation with the start time of the school, start and end time, to see if that, what the overall impact is. So we are taking a look across, across the city in terms of variations. You had a second part. I don't remember what you asked. I apologize.
No, the length of, it was really more about the length of the day, whether they were spending more time than they would have if they were riding the yellow bus to get back and forth.
Right. So the, so the actual, the amount of time is very comparable, and we can provide you a school-by-school list for that as well in terms of the average walk, the average ride, increase or decrease by school.
Thank you. All set, Ms. Robinson. Ms. Robinson?
The other Robinson, as they said on Monday. So first, I also want to applaud the work that you all have done. This, there are so many wins, first of all. They're just, as I was listening, I was listening with all the relevant lens that I wear here. So I was first listening as a parent, and I was a bit mortified because my kids are young, and I'm thinking, whoa. Riding on the train, riding on the bus, you know, doing this by themselves. But then, as I continued to listen, and I had to grow up in my parenting, in my thinking, the biggest win here is that we're developing productive citizens in Boston. And we're, you know, to Ms. Robinson's point, we're helping our kids grow up. We're helping them understand what it means to be a member of the larger, greater Boston community. So I see that as a huge win. I'm so thankful for the thoroughness that you all have taken in engaging the parents, engaging the teachers, engaging the students, hearing the feedback. That's been really, really critical. The other great one is you're establishing this positive routine for our middle schoolers. You're helping them understand, just as the adults get up and go to work, and everyone has a routine. This is a safe, this is a positive, this is a very important routine for them. So I saw that as, you know, another additional win. And then the safety that you all have prioritized, and you've emphasized over and over, you know, having members of the police force as, as partners, but also very visible, giving the kids high fives, you know, letting them see that this is all, this is positive. Your interaction with law enforcement doesn't have to just be negative, but it can be very positive and very helpful. So I just see these as huge wins. And then, I see this as a win, but I also want to reiterate Ms. Robinson's point. It's a huge win for our middle schools to engage with adults as role models. And I, as an adult, I enjoy engaging with young people when I see them in public, especially when I catch them doing great things, when I catch them doing good. So I want to really applaud the work that you all are doing in engaging all of the necessary adults, but I really want us to think about a greater community engagement strategy. I know of other districts who've done things like a Be Nice campaign, and they have T-shirts. They have, they've taken it community-wide, where we're engaging the community, this village approach, because that's what I see this as. This is, this is a village approach to really helping our youngest citizens who are traveling with us in the morning, helping them grow as we're also growing, because the adults are going to have to shift, right? We see that. You're reading your paper, and a kid is bouncing the ball. We have to shift some expectations. But I love the adolescent brain work that you're doing, because that is critical. You're helping all of us adults realize we were once in their shoes, and give them a break. Just give them a break. Recognize what they're doing, why they're doing it, and it's a short time from here to school. So I really want to, I'd love to hear more about a community engagement strategy, some type of campaign to say, Boston, be nice. Boston, help our youngest citizens win each morning, each afternoon. We all, you know, we get up in the morning grumpy, we've got to get to work, we have tough days, somebody cuts in front of us. We all go through this. Now imagine the 13, 14, 15-year-old who hasn't quite developed the way you have. So give them a break, be nice, something, whatever the campaign. But I think the messaging to Mr. O'Neill's point is important for us to engage the greater community. So I have just a couple of questions. With your recommendation, and you're talking about how to build this culture where students can give feedback, I wonder if, you know, with the Safe Space phone number that we heard about earlier, if we develop something that's easy and simple. Every child, every middle schooler knows the number, has access to the number, and there is some, you know, regular feedback that either through texting or, you know, how's your ride, just some type. I'm thinking, as I was listening, how we can regularly engage students. I know social media is their best friend. So just wondering how we can have constant communication, especially in the reporting that isn't reported. You know, I'm definitely sensitive to hearing about the female riders who are having inappropriate contact with adult males, and what we can do, whether they're the high school males or whether they're adult riders, what we can do to give them a safe space, to give them, even if it's the same number, but to give them an opportunity to say, you know, give us your satisfaction, your level of satisfaction, your level of safety. And so if there are offenders that we have to pay attention to, just like you all know the adolescents who are riding regularly, adults are probably riding regularly as well. So paying attention to, you know, the adults who are acting inappropriate or who need to have some training on engaging, you know, young people when they're riding the train. So that's, you know, it's a question slash comment. If you have some thoughts about it, I'd love to hear that. And then my second question slash comment is how the regular communication with parents. Because students may not talk to law enforcement, they may not talk to a community leader or their school leaders, but they may interact with their parents. They may say something to their parent about their commute. And so how can we foster even healthy and closer family engagement and parent communication to the students as they are, as we're all together helping the child kind of grow up? So those are two thoughts that I had as I, you know, as I listened. I'm really, really excited about, just about the work that you did and working together, because you all are stakeholders from so many areas of the community, but you have the same goal in mind, and that's to set our students up for success, our youngest citizens, and helping them grow up. And I'm just glad that we can listen and be a part of the presentation, but also hopefully be a part of the solution too. So thank you.
Ms. Robinson, did you want an answer to the question that you raised?
Well, if you have an answer, if you have one, or if you, you know, want to report.
I'll be really brief. I think it starts with the recommendation around having a number, a resource that young people can call, parents can call, where they can get information, report, et cetera. It matters, per the comments about the previous number for English high school students, what's behind that? Who responds, and what do they do with the information that we get? And, you know, given the inter-agency collaboration here, I think some of the infrastructure for the response is already there. But we also need to figure out what the engagement strategy is. We need to actively be reaching out and talking to young people and families as well, not only to get the information that we need, but to help them in an advisory, help them help us in an advisory capacity to do continuous improvement.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. LaCanto.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And so I won't do any justice by trying to rehash what my fellow committee members have put so eloquently. So I'll just say thank you again for, you know, your time and attention to all the delicate issues around the safety of our students on the T. I did want to just mention two things, give two plugs for potential areas of further help here, especially around the community piece. And so, you know, the thought first occurs to me, and I appreciate Mr. Dorsey for raising the Safe Space hotline. The thought occurs to me in listening to just all the presentations tonight, you know, we're starting a Safe Space hotline for certain perceived offenses in the schools. We've got an anti-bullying hotline. We've got some sort of hotline that you all are trying to implement for transportation-related issues. Has there been thought, and this is more of a question for the district, but, you know, we're all working together on these issues, about, you know, some sort of, you know, 3-1-1 approach or something along those lines, where it's just a simple unifying number or outlet that, that everyone in the community can use? And when I say everyone in the community, I mean students, parents, teachers, staff members in BPS, and the extended group of individuals that, you know, are with our students throughout the day. The reason I, or the reference point I might provide for that line of thought besides just a 3-1-1 example would be the whistleblower hotlines and similar that you find both in industry as well as in places like higher ed. I can, I can point you to policies, of course, that I've worked on in my day job, and others that have been exemplars out in the community that I would recommend for further consideration. The other item that I would reference is something that you mentioned in the area of community engagement, the concerns that some of the local businesses have had around our students. And so we have a very robust Main Streets program in the city. We had somebody from Eggleston Square testifying earlier. I've been a part of West Roxbury Main Streets in the past. And there's 21 of them across the city, and, you know, God knows how many businesses are part of those groups. But, you know, they're certainly an asset that can be utilized, and they certainly have a fairly robust, at the city-level budget for advertising campaigns and outreach. So for the purposes of that, I'd suggest talking to them. The one question I had, or maybe area for further elaboration, would be around the issue of arrests. And I think the technical SP, you spoke to this a bit, and it was in the slides as well, around the number of juvenile arrests on, on the T during this last period. And so, you know, there was some concern that the task force expressed around that. And so I'd wonder, you know, what the, what those specific concerns were. I note there was some mediation training that was referenced that we've gone through, as well as the BOSTIC training that you referenced as well. And I'd also note that there's, you know, there's other groups out there like COCAK, the Code of Conduct Advisory Council, in the schools that are working on similar issues, not on transportation, per se, but certainly in the, in the school community again. So a little bit more around that, that would be helpful for us.
The difficult part of the arrest, the number of arrests that are made this year as compared to, say, last year. Last year, the law has changed that a 17-year-old is now a juvenile. And most of last year, a 17-year-old was an adult. So the numbers really don't, don't speak clearly, because we could say we have 89 juvenile arrests this year so far. And then we break them down into juvenile-related arrests, as if there was an 18-year-old involved in a fight with a 16-year-old, we would count that as two arrests, but juvenile-related. So we've broken them down, straight juvenile arrests. So we're in around 89 juvenile arrests this year, whereas last year, we ended up with around 54. So there's more, it seems like a spike, but you have to, you have to keep that in consideration, the fact that the age has changed. Our first and primary thing is to protect the core of the kid. We want to mediate. First thing that comes to my mind when one kid steals a cell phone from another is mediated somehow, rather than put a felony on a young child for stealing a phone. It's a common crime now, stealing phones. And we try to get some type of restorative justice that you may not get in the court. It may not proceed through a court proceeding, stealing a cell phone in an armed robbery. The judge might say, I'm not arraigning this, because I don't want to give this young man or woman a record, and just dismiss it. And no one has a chance to apologize, whereas at mediation, you have to face the person you offended and apologize. And we work with Chandra Banks from the Cambridge Public Schools, who comes into Boston and helps us with this pilot program that's been going on for about three years. Tremendously effective, with adults and juveniles, and juveniles arrest juveniles. But the arrest is hard to say. But we're up around 89 juvenile arrests this year, as opposed to last year, which was very low. So there is a slight spike, but not anything outstanding.
Well, in that answer, though, you're, you're clearly hitting all the right notes around restorative justice and that effort to mediate and some alternative approaches to justice. So I really appreciate that, and I hope that continues.
All we refer to is school. Like I mentioned, taking the knife from the young man, it doesn't end there. I have Mike Saban's phone number that I could call him right now when he pick up. I call Mike and I say, Mike, this is what happened at the Deborah McCormick School today. Can you handle this? He says, first thing tomorrow morning. There's no delay. It's immediate action. And this is what Tommy and I do every day. We hit the right resource at the right time, pull in the right bell at the right time to get action immediately. It's not something that will wait two weeks for a quarter parent, or three weeks for a quarter parent. It's the next day.
Super. Thank you. Thank you. All set. Dean Coleman?
Yeah, I want to echo the congratulations to my colleagues, but so I want to build on that. This is a great report. It falls, it pauses before it addresses the financial issue that we're facing, right? So I would like to have some sense, if on the committee, what were the barriers to getting the point of being able to say? And we can recommend with some enthusiasm that we go forward with extending this to all seventh graders.
So I think a lot of it revolved around the safety issues that have come up, and whether we've got adequate school and community response to make sure that we can keep all students safe. I'm not sure that we fully understand true cost, though, because part of what you heard in the coordinated effort, I think, is the distribution of costs that is unaccounted for, and that would really have to be kind of an in-kind contribution of the agencies who are showing up. Or we have to figure out with them, what does the adequate resourcing of this effort look like? Again, I think from a yellow bus standpoint and a transportation reform standpoint, we are on track with the anticipated savings there, but there's a black box of what it costs this gentleman, what it costs that gentleman and their staff, school-level staff who are deploying monitors from the school to the platform, the work that our community partners are doing, and the work that BCYF is doing to show up as well. And so I think we want to make sure that this is adequately resourced in the way that delivers the high quality and the safety that we want to as well, but we need to make sure, I think also, that we satisfy the savings objective that the department put forward.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to make sure that one member of the committee who did not speak tonight was Mr. McGinnis.
Yes, Mr. McGinnis.
Mr. McGinnis. And I didn't know if you wanted to add any comments as well, or? I know Ms. Evans said she was speaking for a number of organizations and specifically mentioned Beam, but as a member of the committee who has been extremely involved in this.
Okay. Yes, Johnny McGinnis, Black Educated Alliance of Massachusetts. So still thinking about what Nia presented, there's other things that go on that's not told. And you kind of alluded to that, because when he goes to report to that administrator, you know, "Can you deal with this? This happened," so that it's not a quarry. But how many times has that happened? That happens a lot around the district. That's the untold story. The amount of time administrators spend for incidents that happen after school, and they try to contain it, and they want to keep the kids safe, and they want them to feel safe, but that's the untold story. When we look at data, there's no data on that. It's not reported to the police, it's not reported to BPS, because people care about kids. They spend a lot of time, you know, trying to protect those kids, keep them safe, and deal with the issues that adolescents have. They're the ones dealing with the adolescent issues, whether it be boys and girls, someone taking a cellphone, someone insulting someone, being bullied. That's the stories we're not hearing, but that continues to be part of this as concerning as what's going on, you know, with these kids. And we want them to feel safe and protected, because yes, they are learning to adapt to this, because they didn't have a choice in the matter. And even those that were put forth, those schools that selected to opt in, those families didn't have a choice, the school decided for them. And so that's something we want to think about, and I understand there's budget concerns, but the safety concerns still looming. And if there is some way where we can educate students, maybe someone goes around, you know, create a program, someone goes around to the different schools to educate those students on how to ride the T, what to look out for, what to, what to respond to and how to respond, because they're learning some life skills that, you know, sometimes parents aren't equipped to, you know, tell them about, okay, what happened, how do we deal with this? And again, goes back to, who do we report to? Who do we address this with? And in most cases, it's the school administrator that's dealing with those issues.
Right. So, and thank you. And as we talked about last night, you know, when I asked, because you are in a school, you're a teacher in a school, and we had a conversation about how do we message this with teachers and school leaders and community members, as Mr. Dorsey was pointing out. And this has to be a greater communication effort. So I think your recommendations all fit right within that. And I want to thank the entire group that is here tonight, as well as the other members of your group who are not here tonight. Your work is incredibly thoughtful, and I note that the last recommendation of yours is that the group be formalized and continue. So as this school committee says to other groups that have worked on things for us in the past, your work's not over. I'm sorry about that. But you have highlighted ways to proceed and how to make sure that this is safe for all of our students, that we can own them from home to home. So thank you very much for the work that you're doing and the thoughtfulness of your recommendations.
Thank you.
We will move on now. We have two more reports that I have asked the superintendent to ensure as short as possible, considering the lateness of the hour, the school committee started at 4:30 this evening. So we do have to have a quick report regarding a statement of interest for the Mass School Building Authority for the William Carter Development Center.
Thanks very much.
We all know it's the Carter School, and we have to receive this report tonight so that we could vote on it next week to be able to meet, hit a Mass School Building Authority deadline, because then it would have to go on to the city council as well. So welcome, Mr. Carlton Jones, Executive Director of Capital and Facilities Management. I ask you to please make this as brief as possible, Mr. Jones.
Absolutely, Chair.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Good evening, everyone. Last time I was here, I was speaking to you about statements of interest for the Massachusetts School Building Authority. I'm here again for one other statement of interest, which is on the core program schedule as opposed to the accelerated repair. So they have two different timelines, two different sequences, and two different processes. But nonetheless, it's a statement of interest, this one, as the chairman said, is for the Carter Development Center. This one is to actually undertake a building addition. So this is a much larger in scale project over a longer time period. We are, as you may see in your documents, we are applying for two priority aspects, one being the replacement renovation or modernization of a school facility system, and the other priority for the replacement or addition of an obsolete building. The Carter Center, if you're not familiar, is a school where approximately 25 students of severe special needs, multi-handicap students are cared for. And this particular project is to allow for them to have much larger space, but the key feature of the space would be an aquatic therapy pool that would be part of the addition. Right now, the students do have aquatic therapy training and aquatic therapies, but they have to travel out of the district in order to have those services met. And they travel year-round, so that means that in the darkest, coldest winter days, they have to leave the school, be transported to this other facility where they do receive aquatic therapy services, and then they have to return. So the time away from school, the travel out of the school, it's just a severe time delay and other issues related to that, just that practice. This project will take care of that. We've submitted before to the Massachusetts School Building Authority, and unfortunately it wasn't approved, but we are being mindful and hopeful that this being our one priority submission for this year for the statement of interest for the core program, that we might be deemed favorable as we move forward through this process. We'll be back next, at the next school committee meeting, and it's our hope and desire that all of you would be able to support this SOI, that such that even the parliamentarian would vote if he could, because it's such a severe need and a program that will address all of the, all of the issues that we are hoping that we can provide for those students.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. I open it up to members for questions. Henry Nun, thank you. The Carter School does incredible work, and they have been advocating and working on this for years, have been working on fundraising, et cetera, and have certainly made the case how this would be incredible for the youth that they serve.
Absolutely.
So the committee looks forward to taking action on this at our next meeting.
Agreed.
Now, we'll move on to our final report of the evening, a fiscal 2016 year, excuse me, recommended budget update. As the budget team is making their way, I'll turn things over to the superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have assembled, we are in a position where we wanted to move forward and begin to answer some of the questions that have been raised by the committee. I have a specific suggestion on how we proceed. We do have our team and all the programmatic areas to clarify any issues that you may have. I want to start out by just reflecting on tonight. So in our audience, we heard in public comment, people speaking about the value of adult education, people embracing the supports that are provided to their students in alternative education settings, be they middle school or community academy or elsewhere in the Passionate support to make sure that we continue to collaborate in a way where all of us are meeting both our legal obligations as well as our intended moral obligations to students with disabilities. Fear that gains that have been made to stabilize Madison Park and move it forward in a strong way may be threatened. Concern about having achieved great accomplishment in an extraordinary school like Boston International Anxiousness about their being able to continue the same work. And the recent discussion, which can play out in 100 different areas, of ensuring that we are adequately resourcing the work that you expect us to do. The budget at its fundamental level is an annual exercise of assessing the costs of doing business, determining the revenue that's available to support it, aligning the resource, available resources in a way that is consistent with the policy direction that you, the committee, have given us. And in those instances where there is a variance between the revenue that we would like to have and the revenue that we have, placing before you alternatives that in many cases, and clearly this year, many cases, become painful discussions. It is the one exercise in the district where everything else that happens during the entire year plays out in a single process. So we would like to spend the short period of time we have tonight, I will ask our team to focus on just providing you with an understanding of several documents that we've given to you, so that we can continue to build a shared understanding of the processes that we have used internally, the opportunities that it presents for the committee, and an understanding for the public in terms of how, how does this budget play out, the recommended budget in a way, how does it play out as it is recommended to you? Given the level of discussion that we had regarding, so what other options are there? Why do we find ourselves in this situation, and are there other barriers? So I wanted to provide you with a sense of the totality of options that we have looked at during the course of now several months of painful discussion, that may give you a sense of where there is, where we have missed it, and should we have looked at other things? And were there better choices that we could have made to incorporate into our recommendation to you? So the alternative reduction options. Secondly, and very briefly, the two school-based documents that were referenced at the last hearing, one of them is the Boston Public Schools Weighted Student Funding School Level Analysis, and the other is referred to as the Boston Public Schools FY16 Allocation to Schools. So I'd ask our team to begin to just run through those documents. I do want to note, for the benefit of the committee, any of the issues that you have, we are prepared to come back on any issue. Any of the issues that you may have, specific questions that you need an answer for tonight, the team that has been part of the thought processes and thinking through these issues are here to answer them as well.
Thank you.
Mr.?
Thank you.
Julian?
I think I'm going to go, in the interest of time, right to Nate and let him dive right into the documents.
So I'll start by introducing the two documents that the superintendent referenced around school allocations. Chairperson O'Neil, per your request, we've posted online and provided for the committee the Weighted Student Funding School Level Analysis. Each year, we publish the list of schools, what their projected enrollment was in the prior fiscal year, FY15, and what their projected enrollment was in, for this next fiscal year, and any variance that you see in what I refer to as our nominal students, the total number of students that we expect to have. The second bit of information that is there is our weighted students, the projected enrollment by weighted students. So this is where we take the nominal students and run them through our weighted student funding calculation and tell you the total amount of weighted students that we have in the district. Just by way of reference, we have 56,000 students who are funded through weighted student funding. That translates into roughly 111,000 weighted students, once you do the calculation on base level weights, on their need by different categories. What this shows you is a variance and is a proxy for what's happening with the students at the school in terms of their need. If we have the same number of students, is there any change in the need of the population that we're serving? Are we serving higher need students or lower need students at any given school? And the final bit of information, which I'm sure schools have referenced when talking about their budget, is their weighted student funding actual allocation in dollar amounts. Here we see the variance from the prior year's allocation through weighted student funding. Weighted student funding represents only a portion of the funding that we provide directly to schools. The other ways that schools receive funding is through grants that they receive either directly or through our entitlement grants, Title I allocations. They receive supplemental supports for specific programs. For instance, we are rolling out inclusion throughout the district. There's a supplemental funding to those schools that have our formal inclusion programs. So we've provided for you the table of total allocations for each school, so that you can see the full picture of funding that goes to any individual school, and the details of those allocations by type. So we describe the types of allocations and then list the schools that receive them.
So this is the document that's entitled, Boston Public Schools FY16 Allocations to Schools. And Nate, I think it'd be a good idea if you just ran through a line, so we have an understanding of what's in each line.
Sure. In referencing the FY16 allocation by schools, for each school, we list the department number and the school name. It also includes the weighted student funding allocation for that school, which will tie to the other document that you've received, which is the weighted student funding allocation by school. It's the same information in both documents. For non-weighted student funding schools, we show that their allocation in those, we have specialty programs that are funded as programs, the McKinley School, Horace Mann School for the Deaf are examples of those. For those non-weighted student funding schools, you'll see their allocation in that column. After that, we have a number of standard non-WSF allocations that we give to each school. The nurse allocation, which is based both on the total population at a school and the overall need of the students in those schools. And the coordinators of Special Education Services, which are called COSIS, the allocation is allocated much the same way, that each school has a number of COSIS allocated to them based on how many special education students they have at that school. We then total the non-WSF general allocation, so that you can see the total general fund amount that the schools are getting. We have a category of total programmatic supports, of which, if you scroll to the right, this is a lot of information on a single table in the interest of kind of showing the full picture. But programmatic supports include this year, supports for emotional impairment strands. We provide cluster coordinators, who are program coordinators at each of the schools, and social workers at each of the schools, based on the number of students at that school. For students in interrupted formal education, we provide a supplement to all of those programs. We basically fully fund all SCIF programs, because it's hard to predict how many students we'll get in any given year, and we need to make sure to build the appropriate capacity in our district to receive those students. The inclusion supplemental, which I mentioned, we also provide additional funding to EECs and ELCs, our early learning centers. They provide surround care before and after. They provide surround care before and after school, which is not sustainable within weighted student funding. So that's an additional allocation that they receive. And then, other programmatic supports. We have a number of programs that we support outside of weighted student funding to be able to offer those programs to families in our city. This includes our dual language programs. This is where you'll see a Madison Park supplemental to support vocational education. And our Boston Arts Academy receives a supplemental to support arts education. So, in your, in your files, you'll be able to see what is the specific purpose that we're funding for schools in our programmatic supports. The next category is our soft landings. This year, our soft landings focused on
I'm sorry, could you just focus on the specific document that you're looking at?
Yes, I apologize. I'm working through the allocation tracker. If you go, I don't have it printed, I apologize. So I don't know what you're looking at, but if you scroll after the general fund.
Supplemental funding.
I see. So I apologize. There's a table that has been provided that I was referencing and working through. What you have in front of you that looks like this is the total list of supplementals by type. So you can see the specific schools and the specific ways that those allocations were built. So the first is our emotional impairment. You see each of the schools that has an EI strand and what staffing allocation they got and the dollars to support that allocation. This funding shows up in their general fund allocation. And would be, if you were looking on our other reports, would be indistinguishable from their weighted student funding dollars. It's one pool of money for that school. The second is the formal inclusion supplemental. That's at the bottom of the first page. This is for our schools involved in the formal inclusion rollout. Providing them with inclusion specialists to support the teachers and school leaders. The rules-based soft landings, to date, these are the soft landings that we have awarded schools who were unable to meet their core compliance needs based on the weighted student funding allocation that they were given. You'll notice on that table that they, we do have a reserve in central office for soft landings that are to be determined. So we have a number of schools that have not yet balanced that we're working with. The next category is the non-WSF programs in schools. As I mentioned, there are eight schools that receive non-WSF allocations. The Horace Mann, McKinley. This shows the strategy for how we funded them this year. In this case, for all of our non-WSF schools, we did a level service funding. So we funded the same capacity, the same teaching staff, the same amount of non-personnel to make sure that they could operate their program as they did last year. IDEA funding, we provide a supplement to certain schools serving special education students through our IDEA entitlement grant. The top of the, the table shows our high schools who receive program directors. These are high schools that have over a certain threshold of special education students. And then below, we have our specialty schools who serve high needs populations who receive a supplement through IDEA. The Lion School, the Horace Mann, the McKinley, Carter. And here, the Middle School Academy is being held as an allocation while we work through the details of that budget. Our early education center and early learning center supplementals are shown here. You see how much they would have received if they were weighted student funding school. How much they got through nurse and their COSIS allocation as all schools. And then how much of a supplement they received either on the quality full day kindergarten grant or on general funds. The next table includes our autonomous purchase services. So autonomous schools have the option of opting out of central services and receiving a per pupil allocation based on that. This is the amount of opt-out dollars that each of the autonomous schools received. The CIF supplemental, students with interrupted formal education that I referenced earlier. And then the list of programmatic supports with a brief description of why they received allocation outside of weighted student funding. We also have a category of programmatic supports that are funded through Title I. These are the same as the programmatic, of other programmatic supports, we just fund them on a different source. And then other grant funding. We have a number of schools that receive grant funding either through turnaround status or because they've obtained a grant. And so we're just listing the total funding to schools so you can get a picture of, of the total allocation that schools receive. And the final category is new classrooms and startup costs. You see this is mostly held in reserve, $2 million for new classrooms. Once we get a better picture of the assignment plan, we'll begin to allocate those classrooms out and build capacity at schools. But there are two schools that are autonomous schools who can receive in-kind funding for startup costs. They get their allocation now so they can start planning for next fall. These are the schools that are growing grade levels up. That is our overview of the allocation tracker. I don't want to go into the same level of detail around our, our account program code docs. But I wanted to take a moment, if I could, to highlight a couple of things that I saw. As Superintendent McDonough mentioned, the budget is, is a place where we see our priorities play out. And we come out in our presentation and talk about certain priorities and certain investments that we're making. And I wanted to kind of demonstrate either how those priorities show up in our budget or way, places where you may be confused about how those priorities are displayed. So the first is, under the account code file, under the summary, you'll see under teachers, 123 teacher decline from the prior year.
So, just so that we can sync up here.
This document.
Before you go. This is on the document. That's the cover page, account code. Account code budget. And you're all looking at, where on the document are you looking so that we can all focus on the same thing?
So on the top of the page, I'm looking at the summary, on the second line under salary, which is teachers. Under the third column, you'll see a variance of 123.7 FTE. At first glance, this would seem that we're making a major reduction in force around teachers. But this is really a artifact of the point in time to which we're comparing our budget. So we compare our budget proposal to the FY15 operating budget as of December 15th. We hold a number of teachers in reserve, 141 teachers in reserve. For class size review, for new classroom startups that happen throughout the spring. So on our FY15 baseline budget, those teachers are dispersed out and in the appropriate account codes. But for our proposed budget that we have submitted to the school committee, you see those 141 teachers, and some of these are included pairs as well, under the non-salary line. The first line under non-salary shows 141 FTE, sitting in a central office reserve. So that's not truly central office employees that we're expecting to hire. It's the teachers that we, we're not sure where we're going to allocate, but we know that every year we need to allocate out those, those FTEs.
And Nate, while you're on it, can you just follow through that line where we see a variance between our current reserve of 1.1 million and our FY16 reserve, so for 27 million? So could you please describe the elements that are in reserve at this point in time? And what the intended use of that is so that we don't leave with an impression that there is a reserve to spend of 27 million?
Yes. The, the biggest elements of the current reserve include 11.2 million from weighted student funding for the three schools that are proposed to close. That's the weighted student dollars amounts that we, instead of allocating to those schools, we have put into a central office reserve so that the dollars can follow the students when we, we figure out where those students will actually be placed for the fall. The second reserve that we hold is a $2.5 million reserve for new classrooms. This includes the cost of starting new classrooms, classroom materials. With the new student assignment plan and the change to our enrollment policies, we have begun to hell, hold students in reserve with a little bit of unpredictability of the projection process now. We have new choice patterns that we're trying to figure out and predict where students will go. So we, we hold 2.5 million in reserve for that. There's the traditional weighted student funding held in reserve as well as the new classroom. We're holding reserves for the soft landings not yet allocated. And this year, we have set up, part of the plan around professional development and reduction in overall central office stipends is to set up a reserve for the new superintendent when they come in, when Superintendent Chang comes in, to be able to allocate that out. So there is a portion within the superintendent's discretion for a reserve for next year. So that's the, those are the primary elements that make up that large reserve. The majority of which will be allocated to schools, which is why the reserves now, at this point in the year, are down to about a million dollars. Because we've allocated them out to those schools who have received those students.
And just to be clear in terms of the reserve you spoke about for the incoming superintendent. I want the committee to understand that this was not money that we added to the budget. It is a specific strategy that we used in like schools with an intent to reinvest. So there are two line items where we have a specific recommendation. We looked at all central positions that were vacant. And we said, part of our strategy is going to be reducing all central positions that are vacant. And by the way, we're not cutting the total value of those positions from the budget. We're saving a portion of the value so that the new superintendent has flexibility as he comes in and transition and assesses those things that may need to change. Where he may need to make specific choices in terms of structure, capacity, and has some flexibility to do it. So, I would like to move now, Nate, if we can, just to a quick review of the alternative reduction options page.
So the last hearing, the question was asked of us, what are those options that were considered but not adopted or implemented in the budget proposal? We've provided the reduction ideas that were surfaced, discussed, but not yet adopted or implemented in the budget. For, for this document, you have a table in front of you that shows the category of the reduction. This is the larger bucket, whether or not it affects academics, human capital, whether it was directed towards schools, to give you some sense of what departments these align to. A brief description of those proposals and the estimate for how much that proposal would save the district if it were implemented. The total proposals that were considered but not yet adopted ranged from 71,155,000 to 71,605,000. So this demonstrates the level and depth to which the cabinet considered a range of options to come to our final proposal for this budget. This was the culmination of a process that started by reviewing department budgets with each of the department heads to ask them to make proposals on how they might think differently about their work. What of the services that they provide fit into the category of value add and therefore aren't, we are not compelled to do as a district? And then to discuss the reality, if implemented, would we be able to achieve the cost savings that we proposed? From that list of proposals that department heads put forward, the cabinet considered and ranked those choices. These were those that were considered either aligned to our values so that we did not want to retreat from some commitment that we had made. So for example, you'll notice a number of elements around human capital. We have made significant investments over the last two years to ensure high-quality teaching in every classroom. That requires diversity recruitment efforts. It requires support to schools for evaluation, teacher evaluation. We did not want to consider proposals that would retreat from that major initiative and build on the success of the last fiscal year. So, that, that's basically how we arrived at this document and what you're looking at in front of you in terms of how this proposal came about. And I will stop there and take questions.
Thank you. I do know members asked a number of questions the other night. Thank you for providing us with a lot of information that was very clearly along the lines that we go with our questions. So I'd like to open it up now to members' questions and comments. Ms. Robinson and Mr. LaCanto.
I echo Chairman, I was going to say LaCanto, there's two Michaels, Chairman O'Neill. Thank you so much for more information. It was a fire hose of information, but I appreciate it. We can handle it. So, these are the trade-offs. These are the considerations.
These are the ones that we considered during our process. And I think that, I think Mr. Cruder framed it well, but I would add on to that. That we're basically at the point where, if you look at, if you look at the totality of these, you either move to a disinvestment strategy.
Right.
Or you move to a position where we least want to go, which is retrieve additional funds from schools that, from, from either services or directly in schools that have already been budgeted to them.
So, I guess, help me with the thinking around the trade-offs for the trade-offs. Help me understand, for example, if you were to reduce central office professional development, what are the options for professional development? And I'm looking at human capital first because I'm looking at the kids last, so.
But I, I would have to respectfully challenge you on that, Ms. Robinson, because human capital is the face of our stu, of our teachers and our school leaders that are directly facing our students.
Right. What, what I'm meaning is, instead of looking at eliminating athletic programs, that directly impacts kids.
But human capital directly impacts.
I'm asking the trade-offs for the trade-offs. So if we, if you eliminated $500,000 of professional development, what else does the, the district do for professional development?
I would say to you that, this is on here because there are a range of options that were included and looked at with respect to professional development. The strategy that we landed on, which was fairly straightforward, I think based on, Mr. Mudd brought it up tonight. Let's see a programmatic budget on professional development. Believe it or not, that's a difficult thing to do. We have presented you with a program budget, but not the way that he described it or intends it. But if you look at the different components of spending in professional development, you basically have the cost of participants, the cost of providers. Those are the two basic ones.
Right.
So they're either stipends paid out to people who are participating and/or developing beyond their regular work, scope of work, or contracted services. So in terms of the what, what do you buy, the account code budget? Those are the two areas most affected. What we did do is incorporate in our recommendations, a specific recommendation that cuts across the board in terms of stipends. So, we took, and, and that's a large part of the cost of our professional development. Each one of these, as you might imagine, has a story attached to it.
Right.
Each one that is in and each one that is out has a story attached to it. So I'm actually very happy that we can respond to this because it gives you greater context in terms of how to understand it.
Thank you.
The, the only other thing I might add, if I could. There are certain costs that are in here that if you eliminate them in one year, you have a one-year solution. And then the next year, as our overall structure continues to grow, we have the challenge of finding new costs, new one-time costs. So some of these costs, like professional development, are those that if you eliminate if you eliminate in the budget this year, the next year you have to go cut something else. Whereas if we start to address some of the structural issues that our district is facing, if we start to right-size our schools and start to alleviate some of the pressure that we feel overall, then we can start to not be in a cycle of every year trying to trim back on supplies and contracts and professional development. It's part of the reason why, for central office, we have approached FTE reductions as aggressively as we have because that employee compensation is a big part of our structural problem that we're trying to address with any changes that we made in the hopes that next year we're not in, in the same position of trimming programs and cutting back initiatives.
And in terms of framework, in terms of looking at the flip side of this, what are the recommendations we presented to you? They really are intense to look at, how do you address those four fundamental areas that contribute to imbalance for the district? That ultimately, that go unaddressed, you will be seeing a similar list next year.
Okay, Ms. Robinson. Thank you. Mr. LaCanto.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, gentlemen. I have a few questions, and I'm mindful of the late hour, of course, but I was pretty silent on Monday night, so I wanted to make up for it to some extent right now. So first thing I'll just toss out there is the student's proposal. Ms. Martinez from West Roxbury Academy, Mr. Giuliani and I had a chance to talk in the, in the break, and I understand you haven't seen that yet, but you know, to the extent that that can be costed out so that we can have something to, to compare what the current plan is against, I think that would be immensely helpful in this conversation. So if we can have that before the next hearing next Thursday, that would be great. Second question, this has to do with soft landings. You know, we talked about that quite a bit when you were running through the, the account list, Mr. Cooter. And the thought occurred, I know there's a soft landing for the change in poverty weights this year. I wonder, I, I believe, thinking back last year, I think we had a list of what specific programmatic soft landings we were providing for our schools. And so to get a better sense of, you know, what the entire universe is that we're operating in around that would be helpful, I think, to understand where we're, we're going here.
Okay.
Yeah, we can provide the Title I soft landings, we can provide those numbers to you. All of the other soft landings are detailed in that document, so there's no other soft landings that have been allocated. If...
I just, I just think for clarity, we should pull that schedule out. Let's send it separately to the school committee so that they have that specifically. Thanks.
So just to be clear, Title I and poverty weight soft landing, that's one in the same? We're using this two different phrases to refer to the same thing?
Yes, the sought, the change in poverty weight soft landing for, was for Title I allocations only.
Okay. All right. I think I'll probably understand it better when, when we get a, a pull-out. So I don't want to belabor it. So something else we, I asked about during the superintendent's report, and we discussed a little bit last time, was what are the, what's the support system that we can expect for displaced students once they enter into a new school? So, you know, past the point of sort of guidance counseling around what school is appropriate for them, but once they enter the school, you know, what, how do they meet teachers, how do they adjust to their new settings, you know, what extracurriculars are available to them? And so I see Ms. Skipper's joined us, so I'd appreciate a little bit more on that.
So we can, we can actually give a prime example from the process we just used with Dorchester Academy. So we go out and we actually meet with each of the students separately. We review their transcript at the high school level because it's really essential for them to know and understand what their academic record looks like. And we then give, in assembly by grade level, what the different options are for schools. Many of them have not thought about schools since they were going into their freshman year. So sometimes we bring schools in to present, and sometimes we give them a slideshow and sort of talk through what the different schools represent, what they have to offer, et cetera. And then we do sort of a pairing where they get their school choice form. And usually they have about a two-week, three-week period to be able to return that. In the meantime, they'll come in with questions, their parents may have questions. They bring the form back, and then we line them up to really sort of look at where are they lining up to go. In some cases, they need additional help and guidance. In other cases, you know, they're, they're all set and they're like, these are my five choices. And then we do sort of the match for them and with them. When they get to their new school, Catherine Chu, who's our guidance director, will be in touch with the guidance counselors from those schools receiving the students. So this will be an essential piece for next fall, since we'll have so much movement, both of Dorchester Academy students, but now potentially of WRA students. Really, the interest is to keep the student at the center. It's also just an amazing thing for them to go through what their progress is, what their transcript is, what their GPA is. And actually, you know, in some cases, they're actually happy to have the opportunity to select another school. So we kind of get a little bit of mix. So we've begun that process at WRA already. We have teams there all week.
Okay. And so, you know, once they do, say you're a WRA student and you select English, and that's where you go next fall, is there a, is there the necessary level of guidance counselor support that, you know, we can pull out those specific students and focus on them so that they understand what their options are? You know, is, if you're on the track team at WRA, are you, is the coach going to talk to the coach at English so that, you know, they're taken care of, things of that nature?
Sure. So the, so the sports piece is something that Sam DePina and I will work through as far as making the coach connections. The BSA centers are actually a good way to do that, since they're in each of the high schools. The academic piece, yes, the counselors, since Catherine is the director, will, will ensure that there is that, these five students are going to English or these 10 students are going. You know, where possible, we're trying to move kids in cohort so that they have students that they've gone to school with and they're familiar with to move in one entity. So in some schools, we see as many as, like I know with Dorchester Academy, we have approximately 40 students that are going to Tech Boston together. And they already play on those athletic teams. So, you know, it'll, it'll vary with WRA, you know, it's a bigger student body of ninth and 10th grade. The, the rising 11th graders have the choice of USA as a guaranteed seat. So we're already starting to see some students saying, yes, that's what I want, and other students saying, no, I want to look at my other options.
That's helpful. Thank you. So where am I on my list here? Oh, so alternative ed plan, we heard a little bit about that at the last meeting. There wasn't the preparedness at the time to talk about what the plan is for alternative ed and specifically, you know, what the path is forward for community academy and middle school academy. So to the extent that you have an ability to share that, that would be appreciated as well.
So in terms of ed options, Freddie Fuentes is the director. We intend to come back and give you a full proposal of, of what we're recommending as sort of a phase two, but the phase one piece is really around the budget. So it's essential in our model that weighted student formula follows students, the dollars follow, so that we can properly serve them. And in the case of students that were attending ed options or alternative education sites, the dollars for years resided in the homeschool, and they actually never went to ed options. And this left a very confusing budget model for how to actually fund ed options. So we were able this year to really separate that out through close work with the budget office and great leadership from ed options and Freddie, to be able to really allow the dollars to follow the student and to lie in ed options for the first time. And so that's actually part of the budget recommendation, that that phrase one takes place. The phase two has to do with a coherence model around the curriculum, graduation, all the kinds of curriculum pieces that we have concerning the ed options model, much larger and more of a presentation that we want to give to you in entirety. But for this first step, it really is that the weighted student formula will follow the students and now reside in a reserve that's in ed options. This enables us for our ELL students and our special education students to ensure that the proper amount of dollars follow so that they get services.
To put it another way, and I think this has been, you know, stated in maybe an oblique way in some of the communications, so I want to be clear about it. It's clear, middle school academy and community academy in their present iterations are going away as well, or, or would be going away under this proposal. But I think it's also fair to say, based on what you're, you're saying here, that the supports for and approach to all the students that are serviced by those two academies is going to remain the same and is actually going to be enhanced, if you will.
So actually, I'm going to defer to the superintendent to answer directly about community academy and middle school, but ed options, when we refer to alternative education, is approximately, you know, somewhere around 300 students that are serviced in programs such as our log-on program, ABCD EdCo. These are separate from community academy and middle school academy. And those students are the ones that, for years, the funding stayed at the homeschool. So those are the ones that are actually referred to in the budget in terms of the recommendation being the dollars follow the students. And for the first time, that is what will be funding the ed option direct service portion. Community academy and middle school academy are a little different. They're not directly part of the alternative ed system in that way. So they're funded as programs, separate from the ed option central budget.
Let me speak briefly about that, and we'll provide you with a lot more of information on that.
I'm sure you will.
I think we want to make clear one, one thing regarding both middle school academy and community academy. We are not pulling away from any commitment regarding both quality and intensity of support. So we're really looking at, how do we do this in a way that's sustainable over time? And we find ourselves in a place where it's not. There are a lot of reasons that contribute to that. So we have had, and this is one area, that there have been a series of discussions, some going back as far as a year ago, where we were considering, looking at, how do we rethink our services, our service model, so that our students are appropriately supported? But we're not wondering every year, how, why is it so difficult to continue to do what we're doing? And ultimately, why are we at a place where it's costing us $55,000 a kid in one instance and, and close to $30,000 in another? So those discussions have now led to three options, which we'll share with you. When we went out to speak with the families at, and the staff at both middle school and middle school academy and community academy, we said, we want to know what you think about these three issues, three options. And so we will be having those conversations with them next week. We want our final recommendation in terms of model to be informed by that. But if we haven't already, we will be sending those, what the three options are that they are looking at so that you will have that available for your own questions and your own considerations.
Okay, that's helpful. Just one other one, and I'll be brief on this. So I asked a little bit the last time, last week, I should say, about the, the Rosendale pathway and the effects that the change in feeder patterns from the Rogers into the Irving might have on that concept. And so I want to ask to get a little bit better perspective on, you know, what, what this, the decisions were, they were made behind that, that connection between the populations in Hyde Park that typically feed the Rogers and connecting them with the Irving. My understanding is that, you know, it hasn't necessarily been sustainable, the Rosendale pathway, based on the feeder patterns that come from the Rosendale-based schools. And so maybe that's perhaps part of this discussion. But I think it would be helpful for people to understand from the perspective of our continual efforts towards providing families with a expectation of how their educational options will progress over time and what this does to that. Does it provide better understanding? Does it provide more of a, a long-term plan, if you will?
Good evening. So I'll speak, I think there are a couple of questions in that. One, in terms of thinking about the pathway for students within the Hyde Park elementary schools. So the current, as you know, with the home-based plan, we also established middle school pathways so that students in elementary schools could have a guaranteed pathway to a middle school through the EAC process, the large focus on predictability and continuity, so be able to have that level of certainty with respect to elementary to middle. So in terms of the, with the proposal to close the Rogers, looking at then, what would be then, wanting to provide that guaranteed pathway for students in the Hyde Park elementaries, and then identified the Irving for that. So, so that's one of the, one of the changes. We did look at where would the, in terms of the Rosendale schools and thinking about the Hyde Park elementary schools as well, ensuring that there was sufficient capacity within the building to support the, all of the students. And we were able to confirm that. This gets to the reinvestment in schools and the bolstering and strengthening of schools because with the dollars and the weighted student funding allocations following the students to the Irving, the Irving will have then additional resources to support the students and to support their learning. You asked about supports that would be available to students in their new schools. So the Irving also, in terms of struggling as an underperforming school as well, will now be able to receive those resources to be able to support the students.
Thank you. Ms. Robinson?
As a new person doing this the first time, a lot of this is very overwhelming. And I guess I care a lot about what happens to students in all of this. And since we are the city of Boston with all of our riches, how does this information go beyond this body each year to grapple with us? Because it seems like it's not, you know, the city needs to understand much more broadly about the children who decide to stay in the district, the kinds of things that their families are caught up in. Some children, some communities are much more impacted by the choosing of closing or the impact of closing programs than others are. And, and many of those are the kids who don't have choices to go elsewhere. The question, you know, in a, in a world of crowdsourcing and all kinds of other things, how do we begin to sort of make people think differently about this? Because otherwise, we just feel like we're just moving things around, and somebody's going to get hurt or going to feel hurt, and everybody's not going to be happy. Yes, they can go to a new building, but we've heard enough testimony to understand it's not just about a new building, it's not just about money following a program because if the people receiving these kids aren't really ready, they can still lose a year. So I understand, you know, you're trying to make it work mathematically, but how do we make it work emotionally? And how do we all take a different kind of level of responsibility for this? So it's just my concern.
Not sure that there's an easy answer to your question there.
No.
But it's a very large concern. It does require the commitment of people throughout the district and people who support our schools. Number one, to be aware of the transitions. Number two, for us to be very intentional in working, just as Mary indicated, almost at a case manager level in ensuring that the students have appropriate options. But ultimately, it is the family choice. We have to do that at the receiving end, too. So a place like the Irving, which would have a major impact, those discussions begin now. And it's really for the Irving, it's not looking incrementally at who's coming in. It's really, who in totality are we serving now? And what do we, how do we structure ourselves in a way that both the Irving as it existed and the Irving as it can vision itself to be, comes into play? You teach me every day how hard that is to have those conversations, make sure the right people are involved. But that's the definition of the work that would have to be done.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Dean Coleman? Dean Coleman?
It is very late, so I'll try to be very brief. So your proposal is based on looking at structural, critics of structural rebalancing of the district. But then when you look at these alternative reductions, so one of the things we've heard most clearly from the community so far is this issue, if we're going to talk about school closing outside of the context of a master plan, is there ways that we can think, everyone agrees that there has to be a restructure, we have to have a master plan, is it really so critical to make those closing now with the thought that a master plan's coming forward within a year where this would, it's going to happen, the schools are going to be closed? But when we look at these alternatives, and if we're saying if there's a $3.4 million savings in closing programs, are there things on this other list that for one year would take care of that balancing budget issue while we would then be coming forward with a long-term plan later? So one of the ones that jump out at me, and I'm not, it jumps out, I'm just not recommending it, is we have $30 million in the weighted student formula, which we've increased. Is it a year that we wait to increase some of that, not increase that weighted student formula next year? Or issues of transportation, or the ways that we can address transition issues to get that 3.4 to balance the budget, understanding that we have to finish that balancing in a future year? Not to kick the can down the road, to ignore it, but delay it.
So the 30 million that is on this list is already in school budgets. So what it would require us to do is review those school budgets that are able to be in a position that is higher than strictly compliance and withdraw resources from those schools, which probably will result in reductions of existing positions and supports in those schools. So we get back to the piece of, we get back to the piece of how do we move away from bringing down every school? How do we move away from it? And I think that I would say to you at this point, I'm obviously, I would like to find some easy solution. I don't see an easy solution. I think what we presented to you represents our collective best thinking. And I obviously would look for guidance from the school committee in adjusting our plan if there is a indication that that is the way that you would be moving. I would look to you for guidance on what we want to do.
What's that?
I hear you, and we know this is not easy, and we appreciate it. It's really a question, my question, at such a time, so I appreciate you saying.
Yeah. I think, you know, I asked the question at the budget hearing of what alternatives did the district consider? And so this is not a menu for us to choose from. This was their best thinking of what they asked for from their team, and there were valid reasons why they did not put forth any of these recommendations. And so that's very important for us to consider. These are not part of the superintendent's recommendations. And he was trying to help enlighten us about what types of trade-offs they thought about as they made a recommendation. And any one of these things would have a long story behind them of why it ultimately was not part of their recommendation. But considering we are now just about at six hours that this committee has been together as a body, because while the public was not here, we did start first with an open session and then an executive session at 4:30, I'm going to stop any questions that I have. Mr. LaCanto did hit a number of points I planned to raise, but I'm going to wait and ask any further questions that I have at the budget hearing next Thursday night when we're exclusively focused on this topic, because as I said, if we are here six hours at the end of a workday for all of us, that means the district staff who is here is also here at the end of about a 14-plus hour day. So I thank you for your service and what you have been doing today and tonight, and I will hold any questions that I have for our next public hearing, which is next Thursday, March 19th at 6:00 p.m. at English High School. So thank you.
Thank you.
We will now actually move on to public comments and report. Ms. Sullivan?
We have one speaker, Mr. Jack Senate.
Okay, I will keep this as brief as possible. Certainly under three minutes. So again, my name is Jack Senate, and I'm a parent. I've got three VPS kids. I'm not speaking to you right now as a member of SEDPAC, I'm speaking just as a private citizen. The transportation report I found very interesting. I thought it was thorough. I was heartened by the depth and degree of investigation that they carried out, but I got to tell you, in my sort of alternate life, it raised some red flags with me. Before I was involved in special education issues, I was involved with parks issues in the Commonwealth. In particular, I was president of the Parkland Management Advisory Committee. That's the citizen oversight group for the Southwest Corridor. We were named in the enabling legislation to review, among other things, police reports of incidents on Southwest Corridor, and particularly the Orange Line from Copley Square to Forest Hills. So what does that mean? It means I spent years, years and years and years reviewing monthly police reports about incidents on the Orange Line, from Boston Police, State Police, Boston Housing, and from MBTA. You get a really good sense of what's going on in the neighborhoods and what's happening underground on the Orange Line when you spend that much time and going in-depth with police officers. Bottom line, times change. It's been pushing 10 years since I've reviewed any of those reports. Forest Hills can be a complete zoo when it comes to the afternoon dismissal of kids. Some of the incidents that the police would tell me, granted, a cop of the war story is sometimes like a fisherman with a story about the one that got away, so I'll have a certain degree of hyperbole in some of these. But there's some really frightening stories about how rapidly incidents between kids get out of control when you've got a couple hundred kids milling around on the platform or upstairs, waiting for the tea and missing a train because they're all packed. And when experienced police have difficulty clearing a station and dispersing students who are there about ready to read the riot act, I, as a father and as a citizen, that raises some serious concerns.
20 seconds.
Oh, Lord. Okay, so please consider, there are places to do this right. You will never see a school bus in London. I know that because I used to live in London as a kid. Everybody takes the Underground all the way across the city. It's safe and it's well-done. You might want to reach out to Metropolitan Police. I would also say that absence of evidence is not evidence of absence. The reason BPD cannot tell you about any incidents is because of jurisdictional reporting limitations, at least in my experience on Southwest Corridor. If something happens on state property, which is the park, and Boston Police are involved, it's reported for across street off the corridor, even though the incident actually happened on the corridor. My suspicion is you may see the same sort of jurisdictional issues between a crime reporting in a station and crime reporting around the station. So you need to be intentional about getting exact data from them.
Mr. Senate, I'm afraid you're past your three minutes.
Thank you very, very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Senate.
Bye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Renato concludes our speakers for this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. Any new business for members? Hearing none. That concludes our business for this evening. A reminder, our next budget hearing is scheduled for next Thursday, March 19th at 6:00 p.m. at English High School. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
We'll assume it's unanimous consent. Thank you. Thank you all for coming. Good night.
To you.
Yeah, who is it?